Good evening, everybody. It is June 9th, 2020, 7 o'clock, and we're about to start the Board of Selectments meeting. I'm going to start by just getting, call the meeting to order and get an acceptance of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor? We have, we don't have to do roll call votes tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Great. So this evening, we actually have all of the Board in here, social distancing in here, in the space. There's 10 of us in the room, and we are, we have a lot on the agenda tonight. Before we begin with the topics, I'm just going to go over the public participation aspect of the meeting. Similar to probably the last four or five meetings that we've had, the public can call in and participate on the phone. Michelle is in the back, and she's playing the switchboard operator to get people on the phone and involved in conversation. The numbers, I'll give them to you right now, to call in is 425-436-6308, 425-436-6338, and 425-436-6300. And again, all of this is in response to the government's declaration about public health emergency and social distancing. So that's why they're participating this way. If you call those numbers, you need an access code. You type in 817-651, and then the pound sign, and you'll get right into the queue. Again, 817-651, and the pound sign, and you're in the queue. Did I miss anything, Lorraine? Michelle? Alright, good. We're good to go. So, a couple of things that we're going to start with before we get to the Town Administrator's report. Tonight is a bittersweet evening. As many of you may know, my fellow Selectman, Sean Harris, who has served on the Board for 24 years, is not running for reelection, and the election is this Saturday, so this is his last meeting. He sat up on this stage many, many, 26 times 24, whatever that is, at least, for 24 years. And we are happy to see him moving on to the next step in his life, but we're very sad to see him leaving our Board, and you're giving some very big shoes to fill. And for this occasion, Lorraine went through the past years of his service and documented a lot of the things that he accomplished. And I'm going to run through some of them now, just to kind of give some scope to what Sean has done, and then, his lovely wife Kathy is here as well on the side there. Kathy, thank you for giving us your husband for these decades. So, I'm going to run through some of this stuff, start with some of the earlier stuff, and then, and then go from there and give Sean a chance to talk. So, it must have been, what, Sean, like seven years after you graduated from high school, and you were local, right? You were local high school, you graduated from the Little Red Schoolhouse, and, and you decided to get into town politics, right?
That's correct.
And I remember, I've read back in the history books about your first election, and it was a tough one.
Yep.
It was. And I think, I read somewhere that if it wasn't for the men of Kent really pulling that puritan vote on South Situate, that you may have lost. Right? But they did, and you won, and your fellow Board members were just ecstatic to have a young guy on there. There was that local attorney, Chief Justice Cushing, he was with you there, and that musician, Abigail Bates, right? She was on the committee with you then. And that guy that built the tower, Lawson, I think all of you guys were on back then. So, it was a great committee, great committee. And, and then Sean, you got right, right, right off the bat, you started saying, you wanted to make an impact in town, and one of the first things you did, do you remember?
No, I can't, it was that long ago.
So you got that speed limit, that 5 mile an hour speed limit on Front Street for the horse and buggies, so that you could slow the traffic down there, and the merchants loved you from then on, moving forward. And then, of course, you know, you were always into, you're the young guy, and you wanted to inject technology and stuff into the town.
Oh, that's me.
That was you. I teach. And, I mean, this really, bringing electricity to many of the houses in town really sealed your future elections. You know, you really started that going well. So, that was, that was a big deal also. And I, I think all of us would agree here that Sean, you're a hands-on type of guy, right? You're, get your feet dirty, get out there and help the citizens. And you may remember that night, you remember that foggy night when that boat came ashore and beached itself?
Trusco or something like that.
Right? And you were in Trusco, right? You were one of the first people there, and there's photographs of you there talking to the captain, if I remember correctly.
My Italian was a little off, though, so.
But rumor has it that you offered him a great deal to fill up that tanker with oil. Right? If I remember correctly. I think, I think that happened. But, all kidding aside, I could go on forever because you're such a great sense of humor. But, there really are seven pages of accomplishments that, that have happened over the years, the more recent ones than those older ones that you did. And I went through them, and I highlighted some of them because we'd be here all night reading them, but I just wanted to go through some of the topics that you were involved in over your 24 years here. The commuter rail, you were one of the, the people that pushed to get the commuter rail here in town, and you know the controversy, and really the benefits that became of that coming into town. Widow's Walk Golf Course was not here. Sean was on the Board to get Widow's Walk here and open. On top of that, we used to have a landfill that's now a solar array that Sean got capped and got to be, you know, a functional part of, of town. The whole upgrades of the water treatment plant, when that first, when, when Sean was first aboard, that was at such a lower quality or lower level of functionality than, than it was now, and you were a big part of that. Jenkins School, you know, you were one of the people that got Jenkins School up and going, and the whole transfer station, you know, getting that up and going. So, all of these accomplishments are things that, that were not here when Sean started, and he was, you know, a vital part of getting it going. There was renovations at the high school, right? The override that we're just about to pay off. And then there was the mitigation money that you got from the MBTA. You know, we got $10 million for the town that we were able to use to improve other areas of town, and you were very vital in that happening. Community preservation, wasn't here when you started. You know, in 2003, you were one of the bodies that got it here in town, and look at all the good stuff that that's done, done for the town. We purchased Young's Boatyard, another big event to really give our boating community more access to the water, and the Situate Marine Park, that wasn't here back then. Vital in really helping not only the fishing community, but the boating community, which has always been kind of a passion of yours over your years. Then there was a TA search, right? This is the first one.
Yes.
We'll say it was the first one. So, Rick Agnew was here for 20 to 25 years, and then there was a TA, TA search, which you helped to get Tricia McCasy here. Economic Development Committee, you know, a big push for that, you were involved in that. Then there was just some events, the 200th anniversary of the town, the 375th year, that was in the middle of your tenure. Again, I know I teased you earlier, but you were a big proponent of green initiatives, and we do do a lot in town, and we've gotten a lot of awards for it, and you were one of the key people that pushed those through the years. Mentioned the solar array earlier, but that was one of those green initiatives where we took a piece of land that was unusable and made it productive, and now it pays for half the electricity in the town. So, another great thing. Again, I am skipping so many because there's just too many to say.
Oh, don't, don't skip any, Tom.
Now you want the attention. Then, just other topics that you've been involved in, seawalls, you know, over $10 million worth of money to go to restore the seawalls in town and get all the people that live on the shore as much protection as you can. Facts, big proponent of that, helping that get up on board. I mean, these are all initiatives that are big initiatives that you were a big part of. Then, more recently, some of the buildings, the Public Safety Complex, right? The library and the middle school, all built on budget, on time, you know, great projects there. And then I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you were a key component in getting the room named after Joe Norton, you know, probably the only Selectman that served more time than you in town, and a mentor of yours, and a mentor of mine, too, someone that meant an awful lot to both of us. You know, you were a big proponent in making sure that he's, his name got attached to that building. And then there's all, you know, the water initiatives that we've had in town, replacing all of the water systems, the infrastructure that we've worked on, the pipes, all that stuff, and Jim just mentioned, and Kevin mentioned a couple of weeks ago, that on activities that we're doing now, there are no mentions of brown water, a more recent initiative that you were very involved in. Opened the New Gates Middle School, and then, we had to find another TA. So, we went through another search committee, and we found, I didn't even mention, you also were involved in the police chief.
Right.
Getting the police chief, Mike Stewart, involved. So, so those are just, you know, kind of a broad brush of the big things that you were involved in, and I'll give you this document so that you can see all the kind of second-tier things that you did. But, in your 24 years, you weren't a slouch. You did an awful lot, and, and the people know it. And, you know, from a personal standpoint, I've served here for 12 years, six years, I was on the other side, kind of beating you up from advisory a little bit, sorry for those days. And, it's been a pleasure serving with you. You know, I've never, I never served with someone that was more honest, cared about the people more, and was just a true person. And, you gave so much time and energy, you went to all the meetings just so you could be there for the public to talk to. All the personal things outside of that, you went to my father-in-law's house and fixed his oil heater, and he wasn't even a customer of yours. You know, you just have the biggest heart, and you'll get a chance to talk in a minute. So, you are, you know, a very special person as opposed to, in addition to being a very productive Selectman. And I was, I'm very proud to have served with you, but I'm actually prouder to be able to call you a friend, and I'm really happy of the relationship we've, you know, formulated over the last 12 years. So, sad to see you go, but happy for you and happy for everything you accomplished. So, Sean, best of luck moving forward. You do have to sit through one more meeting, unfortunately, but you've, you've been a great, a great friend and a great fellow Selectman.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm going to open it up to the other Selectmen in the room, if they have anything to add to that, and then, we'll give you a chance to speak at some point. Mara, do you want to?
There's not much more that I can add, Sean, other than, I do remember the first night that I sat, came to the Board and sat right in that chair next to you, and you were exactly as Tony expressed, very welcoming, very kind, and you leaned over and you said, "Just follow me."
Is that that?
You did. And I really appreciated that, honestly, I did, because it's nerve-wracking to be up here for your first time. And I think Tony hit the nail on the head. Your leadership and the way in which you model being a Selectman, Sean, is what I think many of us try to follow, the number of hours that you put in, all the meetings that you make it to, you know, you mentioned, you know, you've been on the Public Building Commission for eons, Recreation for eons, you never missed a meeting. So it's not just Tuesday nights for you, it's usually three or four nights out of the seven. So, and that's how you get the job done, and a lot of people don't realize that. So, thank you for being such a great role model, and thank you for becoming a friend. So, I appreciate our friendship as well, and you deserve it.
Thank you very much.
Karen?
So, first, I'd like you to leave this woman over here. But, so when I sat down next to Sean, I was also very fortunate to have him as my...
Maybe that's the entry-level seat down there.
I think that's the entry seat, as to kick you offstage.
Yeah.
And I sat down, and he leaned over to me and very happily said, "You had your speech ready, right?"
I think I do, remember that.
Once I crank the seat up, and I could be, you know, not looking up to you, which I do every single day, you know, it's going to be, I don't, I don't want you to leave that seat because you have fun over in our corner. But Mara said, "Sean has had to do this job," and he said, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Karen Conley?
Well, Sean, I wish I had had more than one year on the Board with you, but I'm lucky enough to have known you since I was a big kid, a little kid running around down in Shore Acres.
That's right.
So, I'm probably the most fortunate Board member that probably known me for the longest. So, I just want to wish you all the best, and, you know, don't be a stranger, call us up, tell us what you think, because it's always good to hear from someone who's sat there and been through it, and, so, wishing best, and best.
Thank you very much.
So Sean, I'm going to turn it over to you.
These past couple of weeks have been really difficult, but none more than this morning. So, I was going to put some things down on paper, what I was going to say. I started two or three times and just stopped, I just, I don't even know where to, where to begin. But, I, I guess after what you said, Tony, I'd like to start there, and I won't be very long. But Tony, you gave me way too much credit, every, every one of you guys did. I came to the Board in 96 with Susan Fippen, Kevin Cancela, Don Brown, and Joe Norton, and they were a fantastic Board at that time. Rick Agnew had many years, the town was doing very well, moving right along in, you know, fine fashion. So, Tony, like I said, the golf course was almost done, the train was going to come while the rally was here and on, but it was, it was, it was fun. It was a lot of learning. I have never, in 24 years, had a problem with a Board member. You know, I wondered how some might fit in when they'd run, but the next thing you know, they, everyone brought something different, and it was, it has been a lot of fun, has been a really lot of fun. The best part is, I've made of, you know, I think of everyone as friends. I come into Town Hall to do something, and I think I'm going to be here for five minutes, and I'm here for an hour or two in the middle of the day, and it's, I go to every office, and people can't be more friendly to us. And, and, and the employees, that goes to, on the outside as well. So, that was kind of some of the notes that I had started, so before I get too far off track, I'm just going to start over, but, and, and kind of go the way I said, you know, the way I had some thoughts. But I want to thank the residents, first of all, for supporting me all these years. You know, eight terms is, is a long time, and it's, like I said, it's been wonderful. I want to thank all the previous Board members, they're, you know, I hope I don't miss anyone, Jim Pauley, John Danny, Rick Murray, Mario Tool, Paul Reedy, and Rich Lane, to name a few, before you guys came on the Board. I don't know if I've missed anyone or not. But, something that jumped out at me in the annual report, Tony, you had said right at the beginning of your remarks that Situate's one of the best places to live, and, I think I've always thought that, and I think I might have said it more than once. And, part of the reason I think Situate's such a great place is because of the people in it, then they elect Board members, and then we elect people to serve on committees and commissions, that we all sat up here, and it's the hardest job because it's six overqualified people for four positions, and then we're trying to pick those four and tell the others, "Don't get discouraged." So, they come on board and, and do a fabulous job, and then, we go for employees, you touched on it, you know, we had Rick Agnew. I didn't think they could get any better than Rick Agnew, I really didn't, because he was the only one I knew. I never lived out of Situate, so I had no idea what it's like outside my little bubble. And then Tricia came in, and fabulous job she did, look what she had done in, in eight years. And then I said, "Oh, now what are we going to do?" And so we interviewed some great candidates, and I'm, I'm not saying this, I'm setting them up, you guys are in trouble next budget season.
Look what we got, no.
So, we had two or three great candidates, and you guys remember this? And then, the guy from Norwell, who I had never known, threw his hat in the ring, and the others just backed right off. So, you know, in comes Jim, and just continues this, this machine, and that's what, that's what really this is. Nancy, I'm going to tell you something that Joe Norton said, that only a few people told, that Joe told to, and I've told just a couple of people. Joe Norton said to some of us, when we're looking to hire Nancy, "Do whatever it takes to get Nancy Holt to come to Situate." Alright? And that's so true, alright? And Joe knew that, we didn't, I didn't know you, none of us knew you. But, so when you surround yourself with people like this, it, it just makes you look good. And, and every one of us, all us volunteered Board members, we call up Mike Breen, or we call up anybody, say, "Do something," and they do it for us. You know, we look like heroes. That's, that's pretty, pretty neat. So, I, I don't, you know, I just want to, every one of you guys, alright, going, going back from those first members that I had mentioned, I mean, this has been an honor to serve with each one of you guys. Tony, you're like Paul Reedy, you're a numbers guru, you know, I don't, I don't know what the town would do without you. Mara, I don't know how you find the energy to do what you did, especially when you're Chairman, then we'll be sitting here talking, and you're going to catch a plane at 4 o'clock in the morning to go to New York or Ohio or something for work. I, I don't, I don't know how you're doing. And Karen, Karen Canfield? You're the next Chairman, they better, you guys better buckle up, because it's going to have a lot of jobs for you guys. And Karen Conley, I loved you on CPC, and I love you as a Board member, you know, fantastic job. All you guys bring something so different to this Board, it just, it really makes it fun. It, it really does. Am I going to miss those January nights leaving, you know, when it's freezing cold and pitch dark to go to a meeting or something? I'll be honest with you, I might not miss it, you know, but I'm going to miss you guys, and it's been, it's been a lot of fun. And I don't know, you know, I, I never, never thought this day would really come, because I kept saying, "Oh, I'm not running, I'm not running," and then I run. So, I just want to thank everyone for being patient and, and being, you know, the residents that they are. You know, it's, it's been a great honor. Thank you very much. Alright.
Well, Sean, we have a nice proclamation to read for you, you want to hand that to them?
Yeah.
And a little gift, a parting gift from the Town and the Board to say thank you.
Thank you.
And Lorraine and Michelle did a great job helping to author this proclamation. I'll read it for you.
Thank you.
How's that? Okay. So, it is a resolution, "Whereas we are gathered this evening to recognize and honor 24 years of dedicated service to the Town of Situate by Sean Harris. Whereas Sean first became a Selectman in 1996, serving on the Board of Selectmen with distinction for 24 years, he was elected to the Board of Selectmen with Joseph P. Norton, Susan A. Fippen, Donald W. Brown, and Kevin Cancela. As a lifelong resident and business owner in town, he brought a unique perspective to the Board. Mr. Harris was Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in 2007 and 2013." That's all, just two times?
No, there might have been more.
Wow. I was going to say. "Whereas," I think more, "whereas the Town of Situate has seen great change during the past 24 years, too numerous to mention all of them. He has taken particular interest in supporting our fishermen and lobstermen, inland and coastal residents, businesses, and the services supplied to our residents by supporting the renovations to the town pier, marinas, and Cole Parkway, upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, sewer expansion, water pipe replacement project, and supporting the police and fire departments, amongst others. He was a champion of the people and small businesses. While on the Board, Mr. Harris has served as a liaison to the Board of Health, Coastal Advisory Commission, Historic Commission, Public Building Commission, Recreation Commission, Shellfish Advisory Commission, Sister City Waterways Traffic Rules and Regulations, and the Zoning Board Appeals, to name some of the groups that he has been involved. Mr. Harris is very knowledgeable in Department of Public Works, Associated Industries, and is a great resource to the Town, sharing all of his knowledge. He often represented the Board at Eagle Scout ceremonies, parades, and other functions throughout town. Therefore, be it resolved that Sean Harris accept this resolution with the resounding thanks and appreciation of the Board of Selectmen and the entire Town of Situate. Your long tenure as a member of the Board of Selectmen has benefited our community in countless ways for many years to come. You will always be remembered as a Selectman for the people and everybody's friend. Signed, this 9th day of June, 2020."
Thank you very much.
Situate Board.
Can I say one other thing, and then I'll, and then I'll pass, you know, let you continue on? Thanks, Tony called me the other night and asked me to flip on a, an email that he had sent me, and I don't know who or how many of you were behind a video that you put together, but I, I, I thank you for not, thank you for giving me the heads up and not surprising me. It was unbelievable. There were past Secretaries, there were Department Heads, Chiefs, all you guys, everyone, Nancy and Jim and Kevin. That is something that I look forward to watching for a long time, kind of like a, like a high school yearbook or like a college yearbook. I, I can't thank whoever was behind that enough, and I have a feeling it might have been Lorraine, Devon. Thank you so much. That was the best gift. That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Can I wait till open this? Yeah, alright, okay. Alright. Great. And Kathy, thank you. You know, there's so much that, that the family kind of has to postpone and not participate in because of this role, and it's been, it's been a long 24 years.
I feel it's worth it now.
You don't know what's in the box.
And Tony, just, you know, I, I'll embarrass her as well, if you don't mind. You know, thanks, Kath. I can remember, I remember the kids in high chairs, I'd be running in the house, you know, to change, and then running out. Kids crying, food flying, all over the floor, the kitchen was a mess. So, maybe I had the easier job than she did. So, thanks.
Well, you're welcome.
Alright.
Well said.
Thank you.
Well, I wish we could go celebrate, but we've got stuff we have to do. Kathy, you do not have to sit through all that.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me.
I'm, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, all of you. He raised above all of you, so, just letting all, letting you all know that.
Thanks, Kath.
Bye. Thank you. Thank you, Susan.
Okay. So, the, the next topic, I'm going to go to the Town Administrator Report first, and then...
Do you want to say my to the end, Tony? Because, it's, it's up to you.
Sure. Yeah. So let me talk about one more recent topic, and then we'll do the Town Administrator Report at the end. There, as, as everybody knows, you know, the, the Town has been going through the whole COVID-19 impact for almost three months now, and then more recently, with the horrendous activity in Minneapolis, where George Floyd was murdered by a, a police officer, has really started a whole new resurgence of Black Lives Matter and a bunch of different protests around those, those topics. And many citizens have talked to us as leaders of the Town to come out and give, and voice some sort of an opinion. Some towns have, have signed a document, and, and I think it's just something that we need to comment on, and really, give a little bit of, not direction, but just some of our thoughts. I've spoken with all the members of the Board individually, they can all speak as well, but I think what I want to do is just make a couple of quick statements and give a little bit of insight in terms of what our thoughts are into future steps. I think I, I feel safe saying that, that I speak for the entire Board in saying that we all support Black Lives Matter. And I think I also support for them that, in fact, we support all forms of racial equality, that we support all the peaceful rallies that are going on now, and on top of that, we support all of our policemen's efforts in terms of keeping our community safe. All of that going on at the same time, you know, we've all, all of us have met with the leaders of these organizations, we've gone to the rallies, we've gone to the vigils, we participate in it to find out what's going on, and I think above and beyond us trying to sign a document that states the things that I just mentioned, which to most of us, I think, seem like common sense, and we want to try and take it to the next level and see what we can do in Situate to get participation from the leaders of the Town, the entities in Town, the people in Town, to see how we can make steps forward in terms of improving it. So, I've brought before the Board and spoke with them about trying to form some sort of a committee where we can take those steps, where we can inform the Town of current policies and procedures, we can open up avenues of communication, and we can look and see if there's some improvements that need to be made to our system. We haven't met together to talk about this, and that's kind of what we're, this is the first step of that, in terms of figuring out what the scope of this group would be, and who would participate in, and really try and get our arms around what we need to do to make this a productive entity. And, and that's what we're all grappling with right now and trying to figure out what the best way to proceed, but we all agree that we do want to proceed, we do want to proceed in a positive manner, and as, in a forward, a forward-stepping manner, as opposed to just making a statement. And, just know for all of you people that are involved in this, that we will be coming back shortly in terms of trying to get some formulation to this and get some kind of meat to that, those thoughts, and create something that we think will be meaningful for the Town. I... town. I can't, really can't say much more than that. I'm gonna open up to the board to have them make their own comments, but we do support the initiatives. I've met with the police force and the town administrator and other people, and we all seem to be on the same page in terms of moving forward here and trying to find out what the issues in towns are and making our town a better place, you know, and seeing what we can do to help make those steps. So, I kinda started the discussion, I'll open up to the other board members to make comment, and then unfortunately, there's not an initiative that's gonna be decided on tonight, but it will be coming in, in future meetings. Karen, I can go to you, or if...
That's fine.
You okay?
So, I knew I'd get overclinked after Sean's thing, and so I wrote down my, I wrote down something, so I didn't miss anything, because it's very important. Everything you said is exactly right, but I'm just gonna read this so that I can get my thoughts out clearly. So, on Monday, most of us were on the grass, and we were listening to the protesters and their concerns, and, and I was very proud of their passion and their commitment to making a difference. I was also very pleased to hear them acknowledge the issues in Situate are very different than those in large cities, and that we have a police department that works hard to protect everybody, that we have residents who welcome people who don't look, love, or pray the way we do. But they pointed out where we are falling short, and they are right. I fully support taking concrete steps to really study what's not working here so we can contribute to making not only Situate stronger and more welcoming, which it, it already is, but we can, there's always room for improvement, and we can make sure that our children grow up with the tools that they need to take that message beyond our town. So, how do we do that? As Tony said, we bring every voice to the table, we identify areas we need to, we may be blind to, we give clear instructions to review policies and procedures and practices everywhere in town to see where we can make improvements, and we set a timeline so the issue doesn't ever get put on the back burner. We have an obligation to, to stand with the world and commit that we do everything we can to, in our little corner of the world, to give every human access to the same treatment, respect, and dignity.
Well, spin. To either of you. What ahead, Karen?
I just have one thing to say, and that is, you know, words about action are hollow. So, I look forward to action being taken, and, you know, that's my feeling about it, that we can all talk, but until we actually get to it and do it, let's just talk.
Sean, anything to add? Well, I had mentioned to you the other night, I had a couple of thoughts, that was all, those were some, some details that maybe I caught you by surprise, you know, and maybe I was caught a little flat-footed as well, to be honest with you. Like I've said, I, I live in Karen's little corner of the world, I live in a little bubble, I, I don't leave town so much, so, yeah, call me naive, I, you know, didn't realize maybe we had a situation here in town. But then after, after day after day, seeing him at the Rotary, and then coming up First Parish Road, that's when I gave you a couple of my ideas that you could share with the board in future meetings. So, there is an issue, and Karen Conley hit the nail right on the head, it's, you have to roll up your sleeves, you guys have just another thing to put on your plate. Good luck, yeah. Thank you. Mara?
No, quickly, there's not a lot to add. I mean, I concur with all three of you in your statements, and that was a very well-written statement, Karen. And I think, Tony, your idea to put that action as our first step instead of just merely a written statement is the right way to go. And I look forward to having folks, both, I hate to use the word civilians, but community members as well as, you know, leaders in town be on that committee so we get the proper input, and a diverse group of folks too on that committee, so we are hitting all the needs. And I think we have to do a little bit of an extra effort when we do formulate sort of the policy, the, not the policies, but the rules around the charter of that committee that you want to put together, and make sure it gets out beyond the normal listening waves. You know, that's always a challenge for us, to make sure it really gets out there so we get some really deep perspective, so I agree.
Great, so more to come on that. Okay, now we're actually gonna get to the things on the agenda. Those are two very important topics. Thank you for, if you're watching, giving us the time to, to talk about both of them. Are the people on the line for the presentation? Nancy?
We should, Joe. Yeah. So, if it's our, the chairman, I'll introduce it.
Yep. So, we have a presentation discussion right now on the townwide facilities report.
Excuse me, Charlie?
Yes.
Do you wanna explain about the extension of premises for the Voyager being...
Oh, is that, is that timed sense?
Yeah, that was supposed to be at 7:15.
Okay, yes. Very good point, yeah. So, we had a discussion vote at 7:15 about the extension, you can stay here, Nancy, for the extension of the premises of the Voyager by Keith O'Callaghan, and that is actually being withdrawn. So, if you're watching or dealing with that issue, that has been withdrawn, and that's gonna be dealt with on a future item where we talk about temporary extension of liquor licenses. Thanks, Lorraine.
I don't know which one of us is presenting.
Yeah. So, now we'll discuss the facility report.
It's the dance of the social distance. So, this...
I just need to know which one of them is presenting.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
Tanner or Joe, which one of you is gonna control the, the presentation?
This is Tanner here, I'll hold on control.
Okay, so Tanner, you're gonna be given control, okay. So, the facility study was something that was requested at the April 2019 town meeting during the discussion of town meeting on the floor. An RFP was issued in August 2019 for a study and 20-year maintenance plan for 25 municipal buildings in town that were currently underway under a separate study. There were two respondents, and a capital plan submission was brought forward to the November 5, 2019 special town meeting in the amount of $208,225. It was successful at that town meeting, and at the conclusion of that town meeting, this Board of Selectmen voted to award a contract to Jensen Hughes. Tonight, we have with us Tanner Burke and Joe Spokis from Jensen Hughes to make the presentation. There was a kickoff meeting back in December 13, 2019. The building inspections took place. They started at Schenken School on December 30 of last year and continued through January and February, and then during this crisis, they have continued to work preparing draft documents, providing us with reports to look at, and tonight to roll out the results of that plan. So, gentlemen, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Spokis. I work for Jensen Hughes. My colleague Tanner Burke will also be presenting this evening. Just to give you a bit of a background, Jensen Hughes is a team of licensed engineers, scientists, and consultants. We specialize in co-conselling, accessibility co-conselling, and the design of fire protection and life safety systems. Based on the numerous disciplines encompassed in scope of this study as requested by the town, we partnered with a firm called EBI Consulting, the firm that performed the assessment scope related to site exterior systems, interior systems, plumbing systems, HVAC, electrical, and energy environmental regulatory review. Jensen Hughes and EBI partner on numerous facility condition assessments each year all across the United States. Oops, got a little feedback there. Hello?
We're here.
Okay.
Hi, this is Tanner.
We can hear you, yes?
Hi, Jim.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you in. Can I ask you the presentation?
No.
So, we gave Tanner control. So, you have to click on share screen.
I'll send, I'll send, I'll send the request again.
Why don't we just go to the background panel where we can just have a...
Tanner, do you see a prompt that's asking you to present?
Uh, yep, I have that screen up right now. Just when I click that start sharing, and nothing is happening.
So, why don't we just switch over?
There we go. There we go.
Tanner, why don't...
There you go. Don't touch anything.
At the very last minute. So, if you wanted to proceed, gentlemen?
Joe, Tanner?
All right, so, are they gonna see now?
We can.
Yes.
All right, do you have any one other...
Yeah, I already kinda gave you a little intro of Jensen Hughes and EBI, so you can go to the first slide, Tanner. So, Jensen Hughes and EBI were asked for performing a study that provided the town with a master plan relative to the repair, maintenance, and improvement projects for 22 town properties over a 20-year period. The master plan focused on capital projects, and capital projects are anticipated to have a minimum five-year lifespan and to be of a value more than $25,000. For each property, our intent was to observe the general physical condition and maintenance status of the property. To test repair or maintenance items considered customary to the property to continue in its current operation compared to properties of similar age and condition. The study provided a thorough detailed documentation of the observations, results, and conclusions from the site inspections. We captured and recorded the physical condition, attributes, and functionality of the building components and systems, identified deficiencies, and provided recommendations for corrective action, estimates of cost, and scheduled for the repair and replacement of deficient components and systems. The list on this slide shows the building components and systems we investigated while on site. You go to that slide, Tanner? So, in addition to the master plan, we developed a separate facility condition assessment for each of the 22 properties. The list below highlights the different information contained in the individual property reports. We describe our approach specific to the property, a general overview, assessment on a variety of different areas from environmental, overall building condition, accessibility, life safety, and the numerous building systems within that building. We also provide a summary of the recommendations and action items we discovered. With those recommendations, we provided a cost estimate spreadsheet, a maintenance plan, and colored photographs and supporting documentation. These assessments reported to each individual building can be utilized in the future by town personnel as a reference to better understand the existing building components and systems. Can you move to the next slide, Tanner? So, for mediation for the deficiencies identified for each property, we're prioritized using a priority system requested by the town. The priority level ranking of one to five was utilized. I'll go through just high level, what each property, uh, priority level consisted of. Priority one actions are current critical conditions that require immediate action to do any of the following: correct the site's safety violation, return a facility to operation, correct environmental hazards, or stop accelerated deterioration. Priority two actions are potentially critical conditions that are not corrected expeditiously or will become critical within a year. Situations within this category include intermittent operations, potential life safety hazards, environmental non-compliance. Priority three actions are necessary, not yet critical conditions that require appropriate attention to preclude predictable deterioration or potential downtime and the associated damage or higher costs deferred until further. Priority four, our actions are recommended. Conditions in this category include items that represent a sensible improvement to the existing condition. These items are not required for the most basic function of the facility, however, priority four projects will improve overall usability and/or reduce the long-term maintenance costs. And then finally, priority five deficiencies include items that do not meet current codes and standards, but comply with a code of record applicable when the work was originally permitted. No action is required at this time for these items, but substantial work, but true substantial work be undertaken in these certain areas of the building, certain existing conditions may require correction or code required. I'll pass it on to Tanner now, where we'll review some of the typical priority levels on throughout our system. Thank you, Joe.
So, I just wanna give you an idea of what, what kind of deficiencies fell into what categories. So, here we have some examples for each of them. So, priority one, like we mentioned before, that presents some sort of safety concern, whether it's fire, structural, electrical safety, or any sort of workplace conditions. So, deficiencies that typically fell under this were, one really is structural integrity, needs of egress, there was any sort of trick hazards that weren't in the means of egress, but on pavement outside, various electrical hazards, and then also there was missing fire protection system coverage, so that involved, you know, entire areas, not just a sprinkler or, or a fire alarm device, but, you know, complete rooms that were lack in that kind of covers. So, structural, our priority two kind of takes a taxi of that, the ones are items where if they get worse, it may lead to a safety concern later, under less than ideal conditions. So, any sort of structural cracking, that's not, not a problem currently, but soon, soon will result in, in some sort of safety issue. Same thing with roof leaks, broken windows, and then any sort of compromised fire rating materials, like a fire separation wall or a fire door. And then also minor fire protection system deficiencies fell under this category, that involves very much items where it's not gonna compromise the life safety, but they should be fixed, either comply with code or to improve the life safety of the building. So, prior, what was that the, these were other issues that don't present necessarily a safety issue, but they were items that we found had to be broken, damaged, or no longer working. So, some examples of that were cracked pavement and curving outside, some of the interior finishes, if they were out of damage, stained, worn out, there were holes in them, those ones fall under priority three. Some other ones were broken mechanical equipment, like an air handling unit, boilers that weren't functioning, hot water heaters, and then also the accessibility deficiencies fell under this priority. Oh, priority four, as we discussed before, they were recommendations, but these also fell under as what we call replacement reserves, and typically, the, based on these on the expected useful life and age, and then verified with visual observations, but some, some items that would fall under this would be the pavement curving, roof membranes, air handling units, emergency generators, things that, you know, they're high-value equipment that have usually a fairly accurate and predictable useful life that you can predict, and then use that to create a basic kind of window for your replacement. And then priority five, as we discussed before, those are all things that, as we call it grandfathered in, they comply with the code of record, but don't comply with the current code, and this is intended to limit into fire protection systems that would be required by current code, but they weren't initially installed, so we can just tell you that you had to retrofit those into the building. So, we give a summary of some of the cost estimates that we have reached in these priorities. So, overall, a pretty high cost, but when you look at just the priority number one and number two to there, it's really not too bad. Jensen Hughes and EBI, so you can go to the first slide Tanner. So Jensen Hughes and EBI were asked for performing a study that provided the town with a master plan relative to the repair, maintenance, and improvement projects for twenty-two town properties over a twenty-year period. The master plan focused on capital projects, and capital projects are anticipated to have a minimum five-year lifespan and to be of a value more than twenty-five thousand dollars. For each property, our intent was to observe the general physical condition and maintenance status of the property. To test repair or maintenance items considered customary to the property to continue in its current operation compared to properties of similar age and condition. The study provided a thorough detailed documentation of the observations, results, and conclusions from the site inspections. We captured and recorded the physical condition, attributes, and functionality of the building components and systems, identified deficiencies, and provided recommendations for corrective action, estimates of cost, and scheduled for the repair and replacement of deficient components and systems. The list on this slide shows the building components and systems we investigated while on site. You go to that slide Tanner. So in addition to the master plan, we developed a separate facility condition assessment for each of the twenty-two properties. The list below highlights the different information contained in the individual property reports. We describe our approach specific to the property, a general overview, assessment on a variety of different areas from environmental, overall building condition, accessibility, life safety, and the numerous building systems within that building. We also provided a summary of the recommendations and action items we discovered. With those recommendations, we provided a cost estimate spreadsheet, a maintenance plan, and colored photographs and supporting documentation. These assessments reported to each individual building can be utilized in the future by town personnel as a reference to better understand the existing building components and systems. Can you move to the next slide Tanner? So for mediation for the deficiencies identified for each property, we're prioritizing using a priority system requested by the town. The priority level ranking of one to five was utilized. I'll go through just high-level what each property priority level consisted of. Priority one actions are current critical conditions that require immediate action to do any of the following: correct the site's safety violation, return a facility to operation, correct environmental hazards, or stop accelerated deterioration. Priority two actions are potentially critical conditions that are not corrected expeditiously or will become critical within a year. Situations within this category included intermittent operations, potential life safety hazards, environmental non-compliance. Priority three actions are necessary, not yet critical conditions that require appropriate attention to preclude predictable deterioration or potential downtime and the associated damage or higher costs if deferred until further. Priority four, our actions are recommended. Conditions in this category include items that represent a sensible improvement to the existing condition. These items are not required for the most basic function of the facility, however, priority four project will improve overall usability and/or reduce the long-term maintenance cost. And then finally, priority five deficiencies include items that do not meet current codes and standards, but comply with the code of record applicable when the work was originally permitted. No action is required at this time for these items, but substantial work, true substantial work be undertaken in these certain areas of the building, certain existing conditions may require correction or code required. I'll pass it on to Tanner now, where we review some of the typical priority levels throughout our study. Thank you Joe.
So I just want to give you an idea of what kind of deficiencies fell into what categories. So here we have some examples of each of them. So priority one, like we mentioned before, that presents some sort of safety concern, whether it expires structural, electrical safety, or any sort of workplace conditions. So deficiencies that typically fell under this were one really structural integrity, needs of egress, there was any sort of trip hazards that weren't in the means of egress, but on pavement outside, various electrical hazards, and then also there was missing fire protection system coverage, so that involved, you know, entire areas, not just a sprinkler or a fire alarm device, but you know, complete rooms that were lack in that kind of coverage. So structural, our priority two kind of takes a backseat of that. The ones are items where if they get worse, it may lead to a safety concern later under less than ideal conditions, so any sort of structural cracking, that's not a problem currently, but soon should go result in some sort of safety issue. Same thing with roof leaks, broken windows, and then any sort of compromised fire rating materials like a fire separation wall or a fire door. And then also minor fire protection system deficiencies fell under this category. That involves very much items where it's not going to compromise the life safety, but they should be fixed to either comply with code or to improve the life safety of the building. So prior, what things would that be? These were other issues that don't present necessarily a safety issue, but they were items that we found had to be broken, damaged, or no longer working. So some examples of that were cracked pavement and curving outside, some of the interior finishes, if they were out of damage, stained, worn out, there were holes in them. Those ones fall under priority three. Some other ones were broken mechanical equipment, like an air handling unit, boilers that weren't functioning, hot water heaters, and then also the accessibility deficiencies fell under this priority. So priority four, as we discussed before, they were recommendations. But these also fell under as what we call replacement reserves. And typically, based on these on the expected useful life and age, and then verified with visual observations. But some items that would fall under this would be the pavement curving, roof membranes, air handling units, emergency generators, things that, you know, they're high-value equipment that have usually a fairly accurate and predictable useful life that you can predict, and then use that to create a basing kind of window for your replacement. And then priority five, as we discussed before, those are all things that as we call grandfathered in, they comply with the code of record, but don't comply with the current code, and this is kind of limited to fire protection systems that would be required by current code. But they weren't initially installed, so we didn't just tell you that you had to retrofit those into the building. So we give a summary of some of the cost estimates that we have reached in these priorities. So overall, a pretty high cost, but when you look at just the priority number one and number two repairs, it's really not too bad. We give about half million for priority one repairs, and a little bit under a million for the priority two repairs. We decided to separate it out for your understanding, the priority three repairs. So we wanted to include accessibility as a separate line interview just to see the order of magnitude that back contributes to the priority three, which is five and a half million, while all of their priority three repairs are around 2.2 million. Now with priority four, which as I discussed, are recommendations and the end of useful life for some of these components, we came up with an unadmitted cost of 21 million. And in way that at a brute shine cost over the years, it would come to 32.4 million. So following the study that we completed, which was a visual assessment of all these components, nothing too detailed as used components, nothing, not a detailed compliance assessment, we came up with additional studies and documentation that were recommended to the town that they get either for a capital project or some other method where they hire consultants or reseem personnel that they have. But a lot of them came to fire protection and life safety. These would be, this would be required documentation. Certain things are detailed egress evaluations and diagrams, as well documentation for the fire alarm systems and sprinkler systems. Then more specifically, for certain structures, there is NFP A 914 evaluations, which essentially evaluates the fire protection of historic structures that were included in the study. And then other specific ones, the sites were an NFP A E 20 fire risk evaluation and diesel fuel storage dispensing code group for the transfer station. There was also some environmental ones. These were operation and maintenance plan for asbestos-containing materials and blood-based paint, whereas there were other surveys that were required due to underground fuel storage tank. Those would include subsurface investigations and geophysical surveys. Some other surveys that don't necessarily fall in the fire and life safety or environmental are infrared surveys, you know, like smoke placement, investigation of elevators, sensitive with old gates, which had a non-functioning elevator, some structural investigation and evaluation, and energy diet. So the whole of this was to break out the projects based on some of these repairs. So a lot of what we did was, we found all of these repairs that were going on, and we lumped them together into one capital project, whether it was a similar work area of the building or a similar scope of work. So as you'll see from any of the projects, we'll have things called life safety upgrades. That would, that'll include some of these items. You know, replacing fire doors, replacing handrails on stairs, reseem bagging in the means of egress routes, installing exit times and emergency lighting, replacing egress door hardware, correcting different fire protection systems deficiencies. And for each building or each capital project that we created, we lay out exactly what we believe the scope of work was going to be. So we'll take all of these repairs that we identified in the individual facility condition assessments and lump them together with the cost estimate. We also do that for site improvements. That was all curb repairs, outside stairs and ramps, railing, anything that involved site. We figured that that could fall under the same capital projects, go to the same contractor, and get all of those repairs by one project. So in addition to these, we have facade improvements. That would be all windows and doors, general repairs and painting of the facade, cleaning and painting, and replacing any sort of siding. Interior refurbishment, we focus on common areas and corridors. And finishes that need to be replaced there, as well as any sort of flooring, kitchen refurbishment, painting, and door replacement. And the last one, as I identified a lot throughout the study, is ADA upgrades. And as included, we actually divide it into four different priorities. Priority number A, or priority A is site ADA upgrades. Priority B is restrooms. Priority B is interior routes, priority C is restrooms, and priority D is all other things such as counters or hand sanitizers, practical signage. So that sums up all of the most frequently used projects throughout this study. What I have now is, and I don't want to take too much time of this, but we have all twenty-two buildings that we assessed. And basically on these slides, I'm identifying what condition we found them in at the top. So as you'll see, good pair four. And then capital expenditures that we expect when we're related at three percent per year. And you'll see that some of these capital projects are involved. It means I identify that these are projects that we believe need to be completed immediately or in the next few years. So that will typically relate to things that are in co-compliance issues or ADA issues. Whereas the other ones are significant projects that we believe need to be undertaken, whether it's significant because of cost or the role that the equipment plays in the building or it takes time, needs to still be completed within the next five to 10 years. So as you'll see, Jenkins School, that one was a fairly high cost with all the, all the repairs. Some of the major ones are ADA upgrades that need to happen, and then boiler replacement and beachback upgrades. Our Old Gate School, that one, we're suspecting that there's going to have to be a full renovation of the B wing, which is currently vacant. Some other things are water heaters, plumbing fixtures, air handling units, and elevators that weren't working. Another major thing to point out is that there was some major co-compliance issues with this building. That included the stairwells connecting all three stories of the B wing. There was issues with the enclosure the stairwell was in, and with the handrails. Another key point of these is the sprinkler system and fire控system, both were in very poor condition. Sprinkler systems didn't protect the entire building. This will have to be extended to the rest of the, the rest of the areas of the building if there are any upgrades being made to the interiors. Major issues with Town Hall typically include ADA issues. There's no vertical access between the first floor and basement. And then there's various issues with the access entrance and the valve valves that are provided. Along with that, major cost projects include replacement generators and boilers, as well as aging of the side and other general improvements to the facade.
Tanner, is that you speaking?
Uh, Harper, Master Office.
Tanner, or is that Joe?
It's Tanner.
It's Tanner, yeah.
Uh, this is Tanner.
Hi Tanner. I'm going to stop you there, because I don't think you have to go building for building for us. We've looked at the document, and it's a bit overwhelming, and we all need to kind of dive into it a little bit and digest it. The work looks spectacular, but all this stuff is just going over our heads because it's, it's more than we can absorb right now.
Yep, okay, that's not a problem at all. I believe that we might have a couple more slides after this, one or two.
Great.
So I can just fast forward through that one.
Super.
This is, this along with the actual report of the Section 24 master plan, that will give you a rundown of all the capital projects that we determined, and all the repairs, and the prioritization of all these findings that we have. Alright, so let's get online to the last slide. Here essentially is, here's what we did. I know Nancy had said that those twenty-five buildings, we actually combined a few of them as a separate reports, so it came out to be twenty-two separate reports for different facilities. We completed that assessment based on site surveys and document review and discussions with the town. We have the actual items that were identified, and we categorized those into different priorities, and then into different capital projects. These capital projects were assigned for probably a year, and then put into a twenty-year schedule that will, that can be used by the town to determine the schedule. And then we determined that the total capital needs are estimated at about forty-two million. Now, this is a pretty soft number that's subject to change based on how you lump the projects together, when you address them, as well as any other incidental improvements that you're making along these projects. But basically, our goal is to give the town baseline of where it should start and some recommendations to start putting away capital funds to, you know, replace air handling units, replace boilers, you know, a certain time period from now to prevent that defer bias.
Right. Well, thank you, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to open it up to the board for questions. Karen Conley, any?
Just falling asleep, sorry. Shouldn't admit that, right? Just an overall question, when we have this big report now, Jen, will we then take a look at the capital budget and try to...
Going forward, yep.
Yeah.
This will help guide where the capital budget has to go.
Okay, so for example, I know that there's the high school lockers that were scheduled or on the capital budget. There's no mention of things like that. So is this simply a review of the condition of the actual buildings and the systems within the buildings?
Yes.
Without looking at what goes on in the buildings?
Correct.
So for example, it looks as though the gates, the Old Gate School, it's got like a $6.9 million price tag. Does that make that building habitable, or is it simply? Do you know where I'm going on that?
Yeah, I mean, it addresses the life safety issues and things like that in the building. Does it necessarily make it habitable? No, because when you start doing work in the Old Gates building, then you're going to get into asbestos and all those other things that have to be done.
Okay.
So it addresses the immediate life safety issues and those things in there, but
Because I think...
Doesn't turn into a town hall or anything else.
Yeah, if anyone read it, they might leap to that conclusion. That's all we'd have to spend in order to be able to use that building. And that's after just I reviewed it, the whole thing quickly, and that jumped out at me. So all these capital improvements, these forty-two millions, they wouldn't include things like the lockers and the...
Seems to be structural.
Yeah.
And Nancy?
Okay, so each one of these buildings has up to a hundred-page report on it. And so I just brought up the high school report, and when it says finishes and fixtures and locker rooms were in fair condition and did not resemble the condition of other common use areas. So there is quite a deal, quite a good deal of depth in the reports themselves. So what was given to the board was just a summary.
Okay.
The reports for each building are so big, I can't remember the last part.
Right, right. Alright.
Ms. Canfield?
Yeah, so, so this is an excellent tool. This is exactly what Town Meeting requested of us, is to go out and figure it out so that we can strategically plan over time and not just be reacting to things. So I think it's a great job, you're absolutely right. We've got a lot to chew on to figure it out. I wanted to just ask a couple of quick questions, just so when we do that analysis, I've got my head in the right direction. The, Karen already touched on it, so people need to understand that this was just addressed to, it doesn't address any reuse question. You know, each, if we were, you know, we would, we look at this information, and that will help us say, do we want to spend this kind of money in this particular building? Because at the end of the day, it still has its inherent problems. But now we have data that we can actually review that with. The only real thing that jumped out at me just glancing through it, and it was just a glance, was I was a little confused why some of our brand-new buildings had ADA compliance issues highlighted as, you know, a near... Are you projecting those out for the twenty-year frame? Or are you seeing things that need to be done more near-term?
Tanner, did you get a question?
So are these questions being directed at us around how I just will time here?
Oh, sorry.
I think I got most of them.
That's the first one, Tanner, so...
Yeah, this is the only question, the rest of us are just talking. The question was the new buildings and ADA issues being highlighted sort of jumped right out at me, and I just wondered why that, if you could just spend a minute on that.
You know, so as far as our involvement with the actual A and identifying the issues, what we primarily did is we took the ADA transition plan and survey that was completed by another consultant, disability consultants, DHD. We took their information and validated some of the major concerns. But really, at the end, we still took their cost estimates and their recommendations. Basically, we've been analyzing those in the field, that they are all ADA issues, and we incorporated that into the master plan. Now, what we did was we prioritized which of those ADA upgrades should be performed first. Like I said, you know, the site upgrades, then the interior routes, and so on. So we were actually, we were also pretty shocked that there was not many ADA compliance issues with some of these newer buildings, like the Performing Arts Center, Gates Middle School, the library, the public safety complex. That all, information did all come from the ADA transition plan.
Thank you.
You've got no more to do.
Sean?
So in that ADA transition plan, they should be giving you a timeframe for compliance. We did that in our study, but like I said, we were mostly relying on the information that they gathered. They did a very in-depth survey, whereas we did a more cursory survey to highlight some of the major issues, and then prioritized, prioritized the issues from that other report.
Thank you. Sean, any?
I share the same concerns Karen Canfield just mentioned, but mine were, on the Jenkins School, for example, heating systems, HVAC, are there any grants available? Or is it, would it all be on the municipality to update that?
Tanner, did you hear that about any grants available for some of these repairs? Or is that something that you don't get involved in?
Um, we did, I'll be my answer.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's something, I don't feel comfortable giving a definite yes or no answer on that. I can definitely follow up with our partner, EBI Consulting, and take that question to them and get a response.
Thank you.
Depends on the repairs, Sean, some of the...
In regard to that.
Some of the HVAC stuff might be out of the green communities.
Right.
But it's going to be a case-by-case depending on where it is.
Well, yeah, anything would help, I thought. And to Karen's point, and maybe I can shed a little light on it, I thought Karen Canfield was talking about the ADA issues with the new Jenkins School. Am I, no, not necessarily, the library. Alright, well, I was going to say, you know, some of these, it's unfortunate they're new, but, you know, the sites are very, sometimes very difficult to make them ADA compliant, but some of these buildings are fairly new, so shouldn't probably be having this discussion.
The new Jenkins School isn't that new anymore.
Yeah, we like it. It's twenty years old.
Yeah.
Alright.
I just, Tanner, I had a question. In the beginning of the report, you outlined priorities and financial numbers aligned with those priorities, but then when I look through the documentation, I can't correlate the priorities with the buildings or the highlights. So will we be getting a summary of what you are prioritizing as one, two, three, four, and five?
I think it's in there, isn't it?
Yeah, you have it by number, but I don't know what it is.
For a building.
Okay.
So priority one repairs $534,000. Where? Is it spread across all the buildings or is it one building? I know you have the detail, but I would like to see how those priorities are mapped out.
Yeah, per task, per building.
And when we look through the report,
Yep.
So when we're actually looking at the capital projects, okay, assign a priority to that. However, because we're taking multiple of these repairs to amend, however, all of the, you know, if there's a capital project with all priority one repairs, then that would have the 2020 associated with it. You know, we do have the data that we already do, and actually, if you're looking at the report, our Appendix A of the Section 24 Master Plan, that will tell you the, you know, how much the cost estimate for each property for each priority. That's probably the most comprehensive for that.
We'll have to look at it.
Yeah, because it's not, it's not lining up my mind.
Capital projects, that's gonna differ a little bit because we were, you know, you might have a capital project that we lumped in some priority one, priority two, and priority three deficiencies all in together based on it being a very similar total work or things that we got there.
Right.
So they are kind of separately, and I can actually listen up. So this should be straightened from the report that we have.
I see it now on page 85. Okay. I didn't see it up on top. Okay. I'm just curious why we would go into a building three or four times in a five-year span, but that's okay. I don't, you're the experts.
So the only thing that I'll add, thank you for the presentation again, as Karen mentioned, this is exactly what we needed to do to have this available. The one positive thing that I take out of it is there's only half a million dollars worth of priority five and there's, or priority one. Did I say it backwards? Priority one and a million dollars worth of priority two. So those numbers are manageable for our worst situations. So there's a lot for us to digest and figure out how to put the pieces of the puzzle together. But this is the first step for all of us and for, really for the town to start digesting. Karen or Sean?
No, no, I don't have
Karen?
Just, I'm sorry to have my back to you, Jim. So we have this, it's a draft form. We haven't reviewed it. We haven't, you know, accepted everything yet, obviously. But we know we're gonna have to revisit our capital budget before June 27th, just because of the financial war.
We wouldn't try to
No, this would be on us.
tweak this at this late time. This would be at a
More, can we confirm, like, can we look at what we've on the list and confirm it against, you know, just do a comparison? You know, something we're
Yeah, I can. I don't think, except for the gym locker room, I don't think there's a lot of building repairs in there. Do you think a lot of gym locker room and widow's walk?
Or in the quarter go Wampanoag.
Quarter go Wampanoag. Those are, I think about the only things on the capital plan for building repairs.
New cars and stuff.
Trucks and floor show protection and that stuff, yep.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Alright, well, thank you for the presentation. We will spend some time looking at this and I'm sure we'll be back in touch with you, you know, within the upcoming weeks to see what direction we're gonna take or if there's anything we need more information on.
Mr. Phil is on the call as well, he's named for a
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Karen.
Alright, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, so a lot of fun reading ahead of us for that. Before we close that topic, Michelle, is there anyone on the line that wanted to talk about that?
Let me go into Q and A.
Yes.
Q and A session has started.
Good evening. If there's anyone on the Q and A session right now that wants to ask any questions on the facility management report that we just got, now's the time.
Just hit star 61.
Thank you. Star 61. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Do we have people on?
Q and A session is over.
People online for the next topic? Okay. Alright, so the next topic on the agenda tonight is the restaurant liquor license temporary extension of premises and outdoor seating. Jim, do you wanna summarize that or?
So as establishments that serve liquor, they have to provide the board and the ABCC with an outline of what the licensed establishment is. In order to amend that, you have to go through an ABCC Board of Selectmen hearing process, a public hearing, those things. Under the new Phase 2 COVID guidelines, restaurants are allowed to have outside seating. However, under the statute, you would not be able to make changes in their licensed premises in a timely manner that would coincide with what we're trying to do here. So by an executive order, the governor gave local licensing authorities, which are the Board of Selectmen, the ability by a vote of the board to do a temporary extension of licensed premises for holders of liquor licenses to serve food and alcohol outside. The requirements for that service and what it has to look like are both COVID-19 requirements and longstanding requirements for outside seating. It has to be, it has to be set off from the general public by some sort of barrier method. There has to be a way in that's controlled by staff, so people can't just come in from any angle and get in, and a series of other requirements. And then there are the COVID-19 requirements on top of that. So we sent it out to our license holders last week with what the new reality was in this world. We got, how many back, Lorraine?
We got about nine back.
About nine back, asking for various iterations of that and with one, the galley asking for use of Front Street. Right now, Salt, which is going in the old Oro, is asking for use of the sidewalk. Very small use of the sidewalk in front of her building. But if we decide to close Front Street, I think she'll come back and ask for expanded seating for whatever period of time we're gonna do the sidewalk. So each individual license holder had to come in, give us a plan, whoever drew on, they had a plan for what that outside seating looks like. The Board of Selectmen can vote on those, deny them. And then at the end, the ABCC has said the board can authorize the town administrator to approve these on a case-by-case basis, which is up to you at the end, because you only meet every two weeks. So that's why we're here, they're before you. Some can do it on their own property, some need to do it on other people's property.
Sean?
That's exactly what I was gonna ask, Jim. So let's just say TK Mallie's had a huge park, you know, a huge area that was sidewalk or whatever the case is. So under what the governor just said, yes, they can expand, they can control public from, you know, in their restaurant. Now you go down a couple doors and the next restaurant might not have that benefit. They, if they go outside, they would be immediately on town-owned property. So is the governor saying yes to both and it's just up to the boards in each town?
The governor does not in any way address whether you're on public or private property. That's up to the individual town, whether you want somebody to use public property. If we approve anybody using a sidewalk or a street, then they will get another form from us that is an indemnification form that allows them to use it and hold the town homeless in case someone trips and falls and gets hurt.
Thank you. So the only thing I'll add to this is this is kind of at the the initiative of the Economic Development Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So this is something the governor's just opened up to people and it's our thought that we want to stimulate a piece of our economy, make Front Street and other areas in town more vibrant and give the citizens the opportunity to go out and dine that they've been trying to do for three months now. So we kind of prompted this initiative. We said we would be open to talking about using town land for some of these initiatives. And as Jim mentioned, there's only one property right now that is actually asked to use town land. But we offered it to all of the entities. I'm not sure that they understood that exactly. But I think when one does it, it may prompt others. So we've kind of set up our own guidelines in terms of using public land, which we'll go over in a minute. And I know that some people are concerned about it. You know, we're gonna do our best to keep it a safe environment, not have anything detrimental happen to any of the
Q and A session has started.
Happen to any of the residents around there and try and keep it under control. But, but just start getting the local businesses back moving.
Q and A session is over.
Take a little problem, we'll set that.
Good job, Mike. And really just try and get that, you know, a small step back to normalcy. So that being said
But just Tony, the galley has asked for a Front Street. Salt, which is the former Oro space, has asked for some space on the sidewalk, which is also public space.
Who is it? Salt, yes, right.
So
Right, so that, it just, so I'll speak, because we've all talked about this briefly. But our goal was to allow people to use half of Front Street by leaving the other half open for emergency vehicles to get through in case of an emergency. So there are some people that don't have any other property to use and some people do. And they're gonna have to make decisions in terms of where they want to hold their business. And this is gonna be dynamic, you know, people are gonna see what's going on and see what the response is and change their plans is what we expect. And this isn't just for restaurants. This is really anybody that's serving food, you know, the Creo or, or any other place to say, you know, Maria's. Anybody that's trying to find out ways to stimulate their business, we're trying to work with them right now. And actually, we want to try and figure out how we can get the retail establishments going as well. And Karen and Karen have been working very closely with economic development and they're trying to come up with ways to do this as well. So tonight, all we're dealing with is the immediate restaurants that have set us plans to try and get something going per the governor's change in laws. So I'll open it up to you guys for a quick comment and then figure out how the heck we want to attack this, whether we go restaurant by restaurant or just open up questions. So Maura?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question. It's not clear to me, when we do this from these applications, the duration of the time that we're allowing this to happen. So before we start, I want to have a better understanding. Is it until the governor comes back and says, we're now in Phase 3 and everybody can have people indoors? What's the timeframe?
Under the statute, this is till November 1st.
Till November 1st?
It's allowed till November 1st. The executive order that allows the Board of Selectmen to do this is in effect to November 1st. After that, a business would have to go through the normal process of requesting outdoor seating, to have outdoor seating. So their ability to sit outside would go away November 1st. Beyond that, the board would have to limit it. When indoor seating arrived, I think everybody is still gonna want the outdoor seating because there will be limits on indoor seating. We don't know what that's gonna be, whether it's gonna be a strict capacity limit of 25% capacity or it's, your capacity can be whatever it can be, as long as you can meet A, B, C, and D for conditions. Social distancing, room to go through. We really haven't seen what that's gonna be yet. So using the galley as an example, when they open, they might only be at 25% capacity inside. So they're probably still gonna want outside seating to take care of additional business.
Thank you. And then just one other follow-up. Do we, as a local board, have the ability to shorten it or does it have to be all the way through November 1st?
It's up to you.
Okay, that's all. Just before we proceed, I just would like to have
That's a very good point.
We typed on the licenses as far as November 1st, 2020, until the order is rescinded.
Karen?
Yeah, no, that was exactly what I wanted to clarify. So under the guidelines, as I understand it, as you generally correct me, is, so we're in Phase 2 now, Phase 2 Step 1. And restaurants are only allowed to be outside per seating. Phase 2 Step 2, there will be some in, as Jim said, we don't know what it's gonna look like, but they will then be able to do inside. I would imagine all through Phase 2, that if we're gonna do this, it would be, it wouldn't make much sense to rescind it at Step 2. That said, the governor said that window, the whole Phase 2 window, if all of the data continues to be strong, is three weeks. So if everything goes well, Phase 2 will be over in three weeks. And by well, I mean, obviously, we don't have this fucking COVID and it's all health-related. And Phase 3, then it will be, well, you can't really predict me on that because the governor hasn't decided, you know. We haven't put anything out that says, okay, now it can be at 75%, you don't need it. So I think that this board, because everything's so uncertain, you know, we need to be nimble as well on those. I mean, I don't want to see it in November because I think it's too destructive personally. We do have that.
I mean, I should have anticipated that question. I apologize. But inherent in the ability to approve is the ability to rescind.
So what does it take to rescind?
The same thing that you gave.
Just one meeting now and then there, okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Karen?
Well, I guess my question is based on the applications that we got, that we're looking at. Are we still now thinking, talking about closing down Front Street?
A portion of it.
To traffic?
You have to.
Yep. For certain time periods and certain days of the week, is what we're gonna talk about now. But only half of Front Street, so that not vehicles, not transportation go through, but emergency vehicles can get through.
So one side of Front Street would stay open?
No, one side of Front Street would not have any businesses located on it. It would still be closed to traffic.
Okay.
But we would have everybody that was doing outside seating, try to be on the same side of Front Street, so if something had to go through, they could.
Can you, for the purposes of everyone, before we have this discussion, Mr. Chair, outline exactly what you discussed with the police and fire department so we can make our decision? Because I think there's some misunderstandings that we're closing down all of Front Street and I don't think that was your intention during your discussion. So can we have that outlined first before we proceed?
That's where I was gonna go, so you just, you kind of helped ahead of me.
Sorry.
So the discussion was, and I'll look at the map, just so you guys know the street and I always get them confused. Coming into Front Street, from the Driftway, Front Street would actually be closed at Beal Place, which is just past the Village Market. But we would have signs up at the intersection at St. Mary's saying, "Local traffic only." For people to get in there and open to Cold Park Way. There'd be another closed sign at Otis Place. Otis Place would be open as a through connection. And then if you wanted to continue, it would be closed from Otis Place down to the Heights Road with access to the gas station, so the gas station could still get people in and out. And that allows any traffic that goes through the Millworf parking lot to come out there and take a right and get out.
So what would the Salt, or the old Oro?
Salt would be right in front of their store.
On what? Just the sidewalk?
Well, right now, they've only asked for the sidewalk, but if they came back, they could be on the street.
I know, and that's, and I'm not just, but so if they're on the sidewalk, residents are walking out on the street.
Now, what they're asking for right now, their small sidewalk, we went down and looked at it.
Right.
Very small tables. You should still be able to get by on the sidewalk. They're only taking up about half of it. It's four tables up against the building right in front.
And they'll have to rope those off.
And they'll have to put some sort of
Could the, could the gas station still be open and close Front Street, at least half of it have them? They'd have to enter and exit from the north side?
The, the gas station would still be accessible
Right.
From Harbor Heights Road
Right.
And coming from Beaver Dam, yes.
Right.
Still be accessible.
I just think you might have a problem, and it'd be a good problem to solve. I'd like to see Oro, you know, the old Oro, have as much of a chance as someone else a little further down the road. So
Yeah, so I think they're gonna look for those four seats all the time. And if the board is gonna be willing to close a portion of Front Street for other times, that they would come back and say, we would like to be out front on those times also.
So at this point in time, only one person has come before us to ask to be on Front Street, and it's the galley. So the only portion we're thinking about closing right now is from the Eye Doctors to Creo. With the Through Street of Otis being able to go past the movie theater and up to, what's the cross street up there? But I imagine that other facilities are gonna come back. Right now, Hibernia wants to go behind their place and Reva wants to go on the patio by the movie theater. And TK's is out back. Barker Tavern and the Millworf are using their properties, so they're not looking for any private public property. But I imagine over the next couple of weeks, I mean, this is kind of what we want to happen. We want more than one establishment to be out there because we want it to draw people there and we're gonna learn, you know.
TK's was packed last night. Actually, TK's was great. Inside TK's was social distancing and plenty of space. Outside TK's was packed, people waiting to get in. I mean, people are just dying to get out. I have no idea. I just drove by and I'm like, wow.
You're supposed to have reservations.
I don't think people understand that.
Right, so we'll have to...
Figure that out.
I think, Tony, I, I think you wanna be prepared that everyone and their brother is gonna wanna get, get in on this, so.
I would hope so. I mean, I think that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, right.
There's communities in the state that do this all the time, and that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to learn from and do. And I, I think the time period we've got to discuss, clearly, it's not November. I don't know if it's the end of phase two, I don't know if it's a month.
See how it goes.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll be discussing this probably at every one of our meetings moving forward.
I just think we need to give them good notice, too, though, not, you know.
Yeah.
Do what the state does Saturday and change on Monday.
Well, the other, the other message that's gonna have to be conveyed to anybody who's outside is if we start getting a lot of complaints about noise, or trash, or smoking, or whatever, you're gonna have an individual problem yourself, opposed to, "We're gonna shut everything down." We're gonna come down and say, "No, you keep it up, we're gonna yank your ability to be out here."
Okay. Did you have something before we try?
I wondered if you wanted me to just give you the, the sort of big picture of the work that the EDC has been doing, just sort of trying to think this through.
Sure.
Before we go into the details. So, the Board of Health Director and volunteers that are working with the Citra Club Local went out and canvassed. I know Drew went and talked to all the restaurants, gave them the heads up of what, you know, is available to them as an opportunity. And then a couple of excellent people went door-to-door the last two days to try to see how the people down there feel, because it's, you know, it's a big deal, and if galley gets, you know, they're best for four days, and that, that's quite substantial. So they did do that, and, and one thing we really haven't touched on is for the retail, or two things we haven't touched on. One is for the retailers, their benefit is they can put a sidewalk sale out and not have to feel like they're pushing people out into the street if it's a pedestrian way. So it doesn't help just restaurants, it helps the retailers if they choose to do those things, because I would assume there's something prohibited in that.
They would just need to request permission to be out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so, but they, they wouldn't need our support, or our, it's not liquor, so we don't have to do it. The other thing that you sort of mentioned was, the plan of closing the Front Street also is this public safety thing in itself. If you want people to go down and use businesses, you need to provide a lane for them to walk, that they're not right up against each other. And so if half of Front Street is just a pedestrian way, that means you can, you can keep apart from people. So those were the sort of macro benefits. So the results of going side by, going door-to-door, and obviously, they only got some people that are down there, but those are the people that are getting ready to open, there were 19 people, 19 businesses that were like, "Absolutely, this is very good." There were 11 that said, "Okay," and it was a range of, "Ah, may not help me, but let me help my, my neighbor," or, "Yeah, I probably won't, I won't do anything with it, so it's fine, but whatever." And there were four that were like, "Absolutely not." And of those, of those, the gas station has serious concerns for obvious reasons. Their whole business is people driving in. And the other three aren't, aren't on Front Street. So they had more concerns than they would have anytime you close the street. And I just, the one thing I do wanna point out is, this is not Heritage Days, this is not vendors up down the middle of the street and, and all of that, and taking parking from behind the Old Parkway. This would not impact the parking in Cole Parkway at all. You would still be able to come around, go up Otis, get to the liquor store, very important these days. And it's a different traffic pattern altogether. So I just wanted you guys to have that input on that as well.
Great. Sean?
I guess I'll mention his name. I had a conversation with Mike Gibbons on the Waterways Committee, not at one of their meetings, I happened to bump into him. And, you know, we hear from the boaters, you know, their season is Memorial Day to Labor Day, they pay a lot of money per foot. So I said to Mike, I said, you know, when we do this, we wanna make sure that, you know, these people aren't coming in, taking up those spots, because, you know, people go down Friday or Saturday nights, or Thursdays, whatever the case is, and enjoy their boat. And right now, they deal with, or they always had to deal with Heritage Days as well as the carnival. So, so keep that in mind. Maybe you could have people park at other locations besides Cole Parkway. Let the people who have boats somehow, you know, use that, those spots. But he thought they could coexist. So like Karen, I have talked to a few people, because you got, you know, we've kind of been talking about this here and there, and I know there'll be people against it, but I haven't personally talked to anyone that's been against it, so.
How many parking spaces, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, how many parking spaces are on Front Street? Were you displaced if we did what we're about to do?
Really only near galley.
Yeah.
Where they park across the street.
Half dozen, maybe?
Yeah.
It'll be for the boaters, so pretty much the same.
No, but if you, can I, so if you draw hundreds of people in, hopefully, that's what's gonna happen, they've gotta park somewhere, where normally they wouldn't. So, you know, this, this could, this could turn into a small Ebor City down in Tampa, Florida.
Well, they, they would, though. I mean, typically, people are going out to dinner on these nights in much higher levels, and they're gonna be available on the street, and they park somewhere. You know, we're only taking 10 spots away.
People will need reservations, as they said, so it's not everybody's gonna be going down there, hanging out at the restaurant, at the bar, waiting for their reservation. They'll be going in, eating a dinner, and then hopefully shopping someplace, but then going home.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is, go to Maura.
Mr. Chair, just a suggestion, looking at the map that I have open. If we don't have a request for anybody to use the street between Allen Place and Harbor Heights Road, I would suggest that we only close between Otis and Allen and Beal and Otis. That way, you're restricting that walking area and giving more accessibility. Because I think, I don't think Salt has given us anything for a...
Road closure.
For road closure, so why would we close it?
Well, the only thing we're closing right now is the one section for galley. It's only closing from, from the Eye Doctor to Creo.
Okay, so that's not what we just heard, though?
Well, no one's, because no one's asked for anything.
Okay.
We expect that they will, but they haven't.
Okay.
So if Reva comes back to us and they wanna do it, then we're not gonna let them go on Otis, we're gonna let them go in front, on Front Street.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And will we, will Jim have the, you'll be able to do that without coming back to us?
You'll have to vote it out there.
If we were to give you that authority?
If we're allowed to give you that authority? Rain and her vast network of licensed people got that information from the ABCC, yeah, so.
Just for this particular situation? Thank you.
Yeah, and...
Karen?
Thank you, Karen.
Hi.
Yeah?
I appreciate what EDC did, and I appreciate the fact that they went down and did a survey. I don't know if they went up into the apartments.
Yeah.
And we have had some residents concerned. And my other concern is that if we're talking about doing this just for one business, one restaurant, I know it sort of frees up the rest of them, but if you look at where that restaurant is, there's not all that much in terms of retail that they're wanna, gonna wanna go out in the street at night to sell stuff. CVS is inward. So I would just be concerned that we not do something that will simply benefit one business that unfortunately has had a bit of a history of people having problems, the neighbors, the condos, with noise, with et cetera. So I just want us to think about that before we make a decision.
Well, as Jim said, if we start getting complaints, I mean, it's up to us to set the hours, it's up to us to set the days. You know, they, in a normal circumstance, they would be open. They would be open from whatever, 11 to 12 at night.
But they wouldn't be spilling out onto the street.
Right.
Well, they have windows that open, and they have...
I know, I know.
So it is summer, and it is an active area, but certainly a good point for discussion. So I'm just writing down all the establishments right now, just so, so I'd like to break them.
There are five that are not within this establishment.
The capital economy is not within the...
Good.
So, Boyd and...
It'd be easy, I suppose.
Boyd, it's Barker, Millworf, Oro, and Riverside.
There's many people that are on their own property.
Right.
So let's try and, Jim, let me ask you a question. So when we set the hours for this, does this pertain to people on their property or on public property?
So the people that are doing it on, each one has their own request, what they're doing on a public property.
Let's say the Barker.
So the Barker's request is Thursdays through Saturdays from 4:00 to 8:00, and Sundays 1:00 to 7:00. So you almost have to do them individually.
Okay.
I think you do.
Okay.
And then we wanna make sure, on the voyage, they have a capacity issue.
Right.
So theirs should say not to exceed capacity allowed under their septic regulation. So we don't want 40 inside, is their regulation, they have 60 outside, because they still have to use the same septic.
Correct.
Okay, so let's go one by one and address them. So everyone has these, so we'll start with the Barker. So the Barker's on their own property, they're looking for the days, Thursday through Saturday, till only 8:00 PM, and then Sundays till 7:00 PM. Only capacity of 18 guests.
Pretty Meyer. I would just wanna hear if there are any residents on the line, in my opinion, that oppose, I think this is...
Yes, you can go ahead. Are you ready for Q and A?
Do we wanna do it per establishment? Sure. Okay. So why, we open up Q and A...
George Jordan, I think he's supposed to join.
From the Barker?
I don't see him.
Okay. So before we go on, is everyone, does anyone have a problem with this one?
No.
Okay. So let's open it up to Q and A for just the Barker.
Q and A session has started.
Hi, if, we're just discussing the Barker Tavern right now. It seems like the board is in favor of their plan. If you have anything, any questions or anything to add, please hit star 61.
Nobody, yeah.
Okay?
Q and A session is over.
All right, so Barker's done and approved.
No, you actually have to take a, you should actually take a vote.
Well, do it, vote individually?
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a, do we have a, I'm sure we do.
I, I move to approve a temporary license to grant... What's looking at?
Well, I'd say approve a temporary expansion of premises for the Barker as requested.
Okay. I move to grant...
That suffice for you, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Say that again?
Approve a temporary extension of premises for the Barker Tavern as requested.
I move to grant a temporary extension of premises.
License.
License from Barker Tavern as presented in their application.
Second by Ms. Cantfield, further discussion. Seeing none. Do I, I have to open the Q and A now, or, I think we already did that, so.
Yeah, we're good.
Second by, did someone second? Ms. Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry, this is, we'll get faster, people. Okay, so that one is fine. The next one that I have is the galley.
I, I moved to table the Front Street top and do them all together.
Okay.
The others are pretty...
Sounds good. Let's go to Hibernian.
That's Front Street?
That's on the back, though.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Okay, so this, this is 10 tables, 50 guests in the parking lot behind, on their private property, behind the facility, is what they're asking for right now. Seven days a week from 11 till 10:00 PM.
I just wanna add, we also found out from Oro that they needed permission from the property owner, we received that from Hall Door.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do have Mick on the line.
Okay, so we'll get to him in one second. So this is behind the building, private property, seven days a week from 11 to 10, 10 tables. Anyone have any questions or problems with that one? Karen?
I'm concerned that they want till 10 o'clock at night, and this is an outdoor space, it's not a residential. I know that that's what their license is, but I, I think that it's also, you know, sun sets at 8:30 on some, you know, during this, you know, for the next three weeks or so. I think since we're trying it, I would rather that not be so late, just in deference to the neighbors. So that would be my, I don't know if it's 9 o'clock, but they're kind of all over the place, and I think we need to be consistent.
Right, so whoever...
Yeah, and the other question is, should we agree to this? And then they say, "Oh, that looks good at galley, we wanna put more chairs out front." Do we just agree with it at the time?
Yeah, that would exceed their capacity, so.
Okay, that's, that's...
I don't think we wanna be giving licenses that exceed the capacity of the license.
I think the majority of them would stay 10:00 PM, and the majority of their licenses are till 12 or 8:00.
So the one thing that we may have to do, Karen, is days of the week. You know, 10:00 PM on a Friday is a lot different than 10:00 PM on a Monday. So I don't know what the board's thought is on...
I think 10:00 PM is too late in that location.
Every day of the week?
Yep. Because I, I think this is a very residential area, they back up to many apartments and many homes right there, I'm just thinking of that back parking lot, right? Noise carries, I don't think there's probably gonna be any mitigation for that. So I think 10:00 PM is late, and, and I actually would probably hold that same thought when we do get to some of the other establishments. I think it should be 9:00, because if you say 10:00, they're gonna be there till 11:00, and, you know, it just, it's just the nature of, I'm not trying to accuse anybody of anything, but I think it's just the nature of trying to get people out of a restaurant and close down an area and not be rude, you know, it always extends a little bit. So I, I would propose 9:00.
In a second. So the, what about doing 9:00, what, 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday? Is that, how do people feel about that?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with that.
So Monday through Thursday?
And Sunday?
Sunday through Thursday.
Yeah.
Sunday through Thursday.
So this is gonna be the same for everybody. And again, as Karen mentioned, it does get dark at 8:30, so if you don't have lighting, it's gonna be...
Well, these guys, since they're going every day, they can, they can set something up. The other ones, you can, if they're only gonna be there for a couple of days, then that's a different issue.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to type what you said.
I don't know what I just said.
The hours of operation until 9:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday?
Yeah, and Friday and Saturday till 10:00. Everyone good with that?
That's better. Thank you, Sean.
Any other questions on Hibernian before I open it up to, is it Mick?
Mick, yes.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna have a Q and A now for the Hibernian packet.
Okay.
Hit star 61, if you want to ask questions on that.
Q and A session has started.
You're now on a line for questions on the Hibernian request.
Did we lose him? Nope, I do, actually, I do, one caller, okay.
Are you there?
Paula, you're live?
Yes, hi. I just got a loud in. Does this have police be calling?
Oh, hi Jeff.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm here tonight on behalf of the voyage, but the discussion concerning the hours has caused me to ask a question of the board. The voyage itself has requested an hour, you know, later than ten o'clock. And I expect the board to be concerned about this issue. And I did want to ask the board, so law... The liquor license law, which is section twelve of chapter one hundred and eighty. It indicates no such license shall be barred, no such licensee shall be barred from meeting of sale on any such day after eleven AM and before eleven PM. And so I didn't know if the board sees any value from the state as to whether how does that still affect potentially state laws that says no such license? And, you know, the hours can restrict the private to eleven PM.
I mean, I'd have two answers to that, and I'm not a lawyer. I think the executive order gives the board wide latitude as to what they can do in this new outside seating parameter. And not speaking for the board, but if you told the board they have to let them be there till eleven o'clock, they'd probably say you can't be there. So really, the choice for the establishments is the board can set hours that they think are protective of the neighborhood. Or if the establishments want to push it to the limit of what they think the statute is, the board will just say no. But I think the executive order gives the board the latitude to set what they want for these outside seating establishments.
I think one more coming on.
Jeff, that was the town administrator speaking and I think we are... We're trying to figure this out, right, and trying to go slow and make sure that we're not... We're allowing people opportunities without disrupting everything, so that's...
No, I understand we're in uncharted territory, you know, and I'm not pushing hard on this. I just was wondering if there was something that, you know, was thought. I probably should have flagged it for Lorraine prior to the next meeting, actually.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Karen?
Yeah, I mean, the only fine point I want to put on is that we're looking at a temporary license. This is not an application to extend your premises permanently, which I think you'd be right, that we wouldn't be able to amend the liquor license. We would just be agreeing whether or not we would like, let them do it outside, but this is a totally different animal.
Right. Okay. Are there any other callers on for Hibernian? Who is... Was it Nick or Mick? I'm sorry.
Mick, yep.
Is Mick on the line?
Q and A session is over.
It's Nick.
Yep.
Okay. You're on the... You're on the line.
Sorry.
Okay. So if you're suggesting... I see we go on ten o'clock. I was looking at eight o'clock. And Friday, Saturday, maybe ten, because eight o'clock is generally... We'd be happy when I go to eight o'clock as part of the weekend, so you don't have to go nine o'clock.
That'd be great.
Okay, so...
Sunday, Thursday to eight.
Sunday, Thursday to eight and then... So what we're talking about right now is Sunday to Thursday till eight, Friday and Saturday until ten.
Yeah. So basically, everybody would get, you know, the dinner, you know, so that way during the week, you close at eight, they would be gone by nine.
Okay.
Weekends, you close at ten, they'd be gone by nine. So, you know...
Actually...
To be fair, if everybody ended around...
Okay, so I think we've got to be clear on the everyone goes home by eleven part. So the license only goes until ten. So everyone's got to go home at ten.
Yeah, as we... Well, the way the legal license...
Or you can't serve.
If you call out, call at ten, if you have an hour, then you have to leave the premises. And then at eleven o'clock, staff has to be off the premises.
Okay, so...
And it also has to be on the ten thirty in the staff, it's not like that.
Okay, so how do we feel about that? Because we can change it to nine if people are going to linger around for an hour and stay till ten anyways. If we're concerned about... About the neighbors. Karen?
Well, what I'd be concerned about in what he's saying, having been in the restaurant business a long time ago, a lot of times, there's a lot of noise, especially if people are set up out in an outdoor area. If they have to break everything down and get everything out, it causes a big commotion potentially. So I think we ought to take that into account, that breakdown, cleanup can cause a lot of noise.
Right, but I don't... I guess my thought is, there's not going to be... At ten o'clock, the area closes. For cleanup and for that. It doesn't stop serving drinks at ten and drink them for an hour out there.
I agree with you. That was my thought process.
Drinks off the table at ten.
Last call at ten.
Yeah, close the area at ten.
No, so last call nine-thirty.
Yes, if you have a last call at ten, they're there for half an hour.
That's right, sip of it.
Right. So the facility has to close at ten. The... Everyone has to be out of that outside area at ten o'clock, is what I'm thinking.
That's my intention.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels, but I just think that area is, you know, it's pretty condensed from a residential aspect.
It's going to be this way for everybody, because I want to be fair.
Yeah, but I think that's fair. I mean...
Are we good with that? Jim, do you have any issues, any questions with that? Okay. Okay, do you have any questions with that, Mick?
Oh. I just wanted to clear, like, yeah. We're just going to be open, so we, you know...
Oh, I see. Did you just say Rivas?
The doors nine o'clock.
Yeah.
The time of that spot.
Okay, so...
The weekend. Basically, you have a last call at those times for people to get off.
Okay. You bring up a good point. So Rivas does have the capability of staying open later because they already have an outside facility.
What time do they stay open till?
Until eleven, I think. So they were two cases.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. In the middle, Bill? No.
But this is a temporary situation where people didn't have the opportunity to come in and talk about it before they got their license.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So let's say in step... Let's say we go to step two. I mean, this is maybe skin and meat, I'm trying to split the cap. If we go to step two and they're allowed to have even a limited capacity indoors, maybe that's when they can have a longer, you know, then you're visiting and say, you have to be off the patio at nine, you know, last call at nine, but then, you know, you can have your... Once they're inside, you don't have those issues. They can have a regular license for whatever the capacity is. I mean, I guess maybe we revisit that at step two, because we don't know what it is yet. I think that that's the point. I totally know the term, hey, because it's... You know, he's got this beautiful new restaurant and he can't open it. But, you know, I think you're right, Tony, that Rivas has been vetted. People that bought those condos knew that that was fair. And no work really, only, I mean, not no work, TK's effects, just a couple of houses and it was there when they bought it too. So I think it's a lot to ask people to put up with. Although, I did call a couple of residents and everybody has this attitude, you know, we're going to do whatever we can to help our people. So they think they're going to be generous until they get sleep.
Okay, so how does the board want to feel about, we're saying these are closing times? Does that mean that everybody's off that outside location at that time?
If that's the case, you have to roll it back a half an hour, an hour prior.
To get a drink.
To get last call.
Yeah, well, that's not our... Whatever.
There's no... There's no bar. This is just sitting down and eating. There's no bar, so.
Well, that's a really good point.
Right, but they'll have drinks. They can...
And have an after dinner drink.
Yeah, it's not going to be a bar outside, but they'll still have, be drinking out there.
A lot of restaurants have imposed regulations, they're only allowed one drink after dinner. I read all their...
Okay. So I'm going to recommend that we start by saying, this is the closing time for that facility. That it's at ten o'clock that these outside areas are done. Everybody's got to be out of, outside of them. If you want to change it to ten-thirty, we can do that if you want to change... But I think whatever time we put here, it can't be vague. This is the closing time of that area.
All clear.
Okay. So what time do you want that all clear to be on the weekends or during the week?
Ten on the weekends.
Yeah.
Okay. You still want to say... Okay. All right. So Mick, just so you understand, that's what that time is. That is the time that the ropes come down and that the tables come inside or whatever.
Well, he doesn't have that.
Yeah.
So that's ten o'clock and eleven about the weekend?
Ten o'clock on the weekends, eight o'clock on the weekdays.
One question for you. You ever asked about the front? What was it? And, you know, normally brought it to our attention, we asked it on Front Street.
Right.
That's maybe apply to the back.
Right. So we're not going to go into that right now, other than briefly to say that we're going to be talking about Galley going on the front of Front Street also. And we are definitely looking at, if people have plans to open on Front Street, closing half of Front Street. Half of the road.
For a few days, not all week.
Right, not all week. So that would just be, we don't know yet, but probably a Thursday, Friday, Saturday type scenario. Yes, Sean?
Mick, can I ask you that if, let's say, let's say Front Street was available, would you scrap this idea about in, behind your restaurant altogether?
Um, I talked to Alan about that, we didn't have to go back to, but we didn't know, at the time, we didn't know it was an option. We kind of baby had something coming up, but nobody approached us, you know? You would probably joke about it, you know?
Well, think about it and put a plan together. We're kind of winging it to get, to try and get things going.
Why don't we let him evaluate that option and not vote on this and...
The only reason I say that is he might have less of a negative impact on residents if he's in the front.
I agree.
I mean, his neighbor out back is the MLA, but either side of that, there are apartments, so that they would hear quite well. But he might be a bit of served.
We just said these are the hours for every establishment, regardless of location.
Okay. All right, you're right.
Right, but the difference between being in Front Street is we're... I can't imagine we contemplate a seven-day closure.
Right.
So I think that's, you've got to think about that, is if you have a seven-day license in the back and it's a little shorter hours, at least you can operate seven days.
Or maybe you choose to, on the days that Front Street's open, move your thing out front. But you just have to get a plan together for us for that to look at.
Okay, so hopefully we'll have that for you tomorrow.
Okay. We... Okay. So right now, we're going to vote the plan that you gave us. So you could start this tomorrow, right? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
What's the whole... I'm sorry, what's your whole capacity, your entire capacity?
What's the capacity of your restaurant, Mick?
Size of the mountain, seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just for attorney DeLeese, the governor's executive order, "A local licensing authority may grant approval for a change in the description of the licensed premises for the purpose of committing outdoor alcohol service as the local licensing authority may deem reasonable and proper."
All right. Any other questions on Hibernian on the line?
Did we do Q and A? Should we go into Q and A?
We did it. They can all talk right now, right, or no?
Mick can, but if he'd like another Q and A for residents.
Sure, we'll go into Q and A for one second.
Q and A session has started.
Are there any questions on Hibernian conversation? Okay, hearing... You have to hit star sixty-one.
Q and A session is over.
Okay. All right. So can I have a motion for Hibernian? And you're going to have to change the hours when you make the motion.
All right. I was just looking at all the dimensions, making sure. Do you want me to make a motion, Mr. Chair? I move to approve a temporary extension of the Hibernian Tavern's premises for hours to be operate from Sunday through Thursday, from eleven AM to eight PM, and from Friday and Saturday evenings, eleven AM to ten PM. According to the plan submitted.
Sir?
We should... A second by Mr. Chair. We should also add that they have to abide by all of the governor's, the state laws, which include reservations and all that sort of stuff.
Subject.
Should we further amend, did you say that the license is till ten, that it's all clear? If one of us says something like... That all, that all employees and guests will be off the premises by ten?
Yeah, I mean, employees can be in the business. They can be in the... They can be doing dishes.
Out of the extended.
But the extended area has to be closed at that time. Okay. So I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, five to zero. We are cruising. All right, the next one is the Millworf. So the Millworf is looking for six tables, four additional tables, seven days a week from eleven until ten PM. Well, I'm just going to assume that the hours are going to be the same for everybody as we just described, and they are on their own property. Actually, can we do that? Yeah, we can do that, regardless of... And they are going along the water, on the back path and in the back part of their parking lot. Does anyone have any questions on the Millworf?
Yeah, where, aren't they... I was looking at the map earlier, and isn't it on their current patio? Isn't that where they...
I think it's that area.
They're asking for the area, basically between the restaurant and Duval's building.
That parking lot?
So, yeah, right up against the water, Sean. So here.
Overlooking the harbor, Sean.
Here's their regular patio.
Mm-hmm.
This is in front of their building.
And lower.
On the sidewalk.
So they're going to lose four spots.
And they're going to go around on the patio also.
Is that their land, that walkway?
Part of it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we... It looks like we've got Bob Warner on.
Hi, Bob Warner.
Aye.
Hi, Bob. So before I turn it over, hold on for one second, Bob. So does any, anyone on the board have any questions on this, other than the hours will change to what we've set for everybody? Okay. Bob, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm sorry?
Bob, so essentially, the board is in favor of your plan with the caveat that we're making the same hours for every establishment, which is on Sunday through Thursday, the areas have to close at eight o'clock, and from Friday through Saturday, the areas have to close at ten o'clock.
That's fine.
I know.
Just the extended area.
It's, yeah, just the extended area, right.
Right, understood, yeah.
Okay. Do you... So it looks like, does anyone have any questions for Bob? All right, so it looks like...
Mick, Bob, those parking spaces there are yours that you would be taking away anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we don't have...
I'm sorry, I know, but I know we're trying to be consistent, but I was more intentionally trying to be consistent along Front Street. I don't know why you have to restrict him for his hours being on the harbor.
This is just an extension of his, of his current patio. I feel the same way.
And he just said he's fine with it.
Well, it's like two cases we open and they're right, I mean, they have the same sort of... They're on the harbor.
He's just trying to comply.
Well, he can stay open to his regular hours on his regular patio. He just can't do it in his parking spots and on the walkway.
Oh, that's true.
Is that hot for him?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That makes sense.
Okay.
This is all brand-new territory, so I apologize for the confusion, but I'm doing...
We'll be talking about this probably at every meeting, so let's open it up to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
Are there, are there any questions for the Millworf? Hit star sixty-one if you have a question for the Millworf. Okay, we'll end Q and A. And can I have a motion?
Move to approve temporary extension for the Millworf Restaurant to include the four spaces as shown on the map from the time period Sunday through Thursday, eight PM, Friday and Saturday night, till ten PM.
Great. And then also, subject to...
Abiding to all the regulations outlined in the governor's executive order.
Have a second?
Second.
Want to make the motion and second? Is this your first meeting?
It's getting late.
Second by Ms. Cantfield, further discussion?
Let me see if you noticed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you, Bob.
I would just, just want to say a word to thank you to the board for just putting the time and effort into this and allowing us to be able to do this. I know it's been a lot of work for you, difficult for everybody, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
We thank you, Bob.
Best of luck. All right, so let's skip Oro. No, no, Oro's not. I'm sorry, you're saying an old Oro. So...
New Oro.
New Oro. So they want, they're having two separate tents, twenty-five people in each tent. Sunday, Monday through Sunday, four to ten. So they would be the same hours, four to eight on... So they would be the same hours, four to eight on Sunday through Thursday, and then, um, ten o'clock on Friday and Saturday. Any other questions on the Oro plan? Yes, Karen?
I do have another, an issue related to the hours as well, because there are a lot of neighbors in back of Oro, and they're not used to having anyone else there at all. So I think if we make the rules about Sunday through Monday through Thursday for other establishments, we should do the same for Oro.
Yeah, so that's what we did. These are the hours for everybody in this first phase.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at what...
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna change that to...
What we were talking about was Front Street, so I was confused, okay.
So every single place that we give this to is gonna go by these hours, yeah.
Same hours, okay.
I'm sorry, I just need to clarify something for the minutes. So Oro only requested from four PM, are you saying that their license set is gonna stay from eleven AM?
Just the closing time.
Yeah, four PM to eight, yeah.
Okay, so is Robin on the line?
With Jill?
Oh, Jill, sorry.
Uh, Robin was, I don't see him anymore.
Okay.
Well, should I just put the eleven in, in case he does wanna do anything?
Um, no, we'll just go by what, his start time and, and time, and if he wants to change it, he just has to call Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so can I have a motion? Uh, Maura has it ri...
Wait, can we make them open for brunch on Sunday?
Move, move to grant a temporary extension of, um, the restaurant Oro's premises license as outlined in their application, however, with the hours reading Monday through Sunday from four PM, Mon, I'm sorry, strike that, um, Sunday through Monday, from, Sunday through Thursday from four PM to eight PM, Friday and Saturday from four PM to ten PM, subject to abiding to all of the regulations outlined by the governor's executive order. Is that clear, Ms. Ma?
Second, second by Mr. Harris, open it up to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
Does anyone have any questions on Oro? Whoever has us on hold. Any questions for Q and A for Oro, hit star sixty-one? Okay, hearing none, we'll close Q and A. I've got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, we're gonna hold off on Riva for a second, then we'll go to the River Shed. So the River Shed wants eight tables on their walkway in front of their building, and they want it from eleven AM until nine PM. Um, is Kara on the phone?
No, please, no.
Anyone from the, um, River Shed on the phone? So what we'll do, even though she only requested nine, we'll give her till ten on Friday and Saturday, which is the standard for, for everybody. It's on her own property, it's up against the entryway. Um, do we need her, the only other thing that we haven't added is pro, uh, pro, um, permission from the owner?
She should just provide us with that, but I think they may even own that property.
Okay. All right, can we?
I don't know, I sent them a letter.
Yeah, we should have to get it.
Can we open it up to Q and A for the River Shed?
Q and A session has started.
Are there any questions for the River Shed? Please hit star sixty-one. Okay, there's no, I'm sorry, no, River Shed.
River Shed.
Okay. Um, okay, can I have a motion?
Move to approve...
Q and A session is over.
Move to approve, uh, for the River Shed, a temporary extension of their premises license as outlined in their application with the hours amended to daily from eleven-thirty to eight PM, Sunday through Thursday, and Friday through Saturday, eleven-thirty AM to ten PM, subject to abiding to all of the regulations outlined in the governor's executive order.
Second, Ms. Canfield, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero. Mr. Harris, let's stay.
Would you like to vote on the River Shed?
Aye.
We're gonna skip, uh, Salt for a second and go to the Voyager.
Voyage.
Voyage, I'm sorry. So they want, um, they've got a couple areas, three tables on their front porch, and twenty-two seats on the patio to the left of the building. They're looking daily from seven AM until eleven PM, and, um, and they've got a diagram. So the only difference between the Voyage is the capacity of the sewer system, is that right?
Yeah, thirty-four is below their capacity, I think the total capacity now is forty-plus, so that will be below their capacity.
So they have a capacity for forty, so this will make, okay.
It's forty-nine now?
Forty-nine.
Yeah, forty-nine, yep.
Okay.
So we'll have to be careful in phase two, then?
When they move inside, they will have to make sure that their total outside and inside seating doesn't...
Exceed that.
Exceed their total capacity, that's right.
Okay, so I would move that we put that in the motion.
Good point. Any questions for the Voyage? Who's on the line for the Voyage?
I have one.
Okay, I'm gonna, hold on for one second, we're gonna open it up to Q and A now.
You do Q and A.
And then just hit star sixty-one and it'll, you'll get in line.
They're on, they're online.
The owners are.
Okay.
The owners are on, you wanna do Q and A now, first?
Um, well, no, I'll let them talk first.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, first of all, we're the only restaurant over in Hamarok, so we do do breakfast here, so we are, our hours would be a little bit different in the morning, we're the only place over here for breakfast.
Yep.
And we're, and we're in a business district over here, which is a little bit different than Front Street. We've had a ton of our neighbors bring in Lorraine and support of us, and I would just ask that maybe our hours would be a little different over here because we, I don't know, we're, we're, we're kind of unique compared to the other restaurants in Situets.
Okay.
But we're not over in that area, we're in a business district.
We know, we go eat there. We know where you are, the food's great. Okay, any other comments, uh?
Not yet, I'm just, I'm just afraid that we won't be able to survive with those restrictions because even right now, our kitchen's open until kind of four.
Well, you're gonna be able to open in the morning, it's just the close time that we're probably gonna keep the same for everybody.
That's right, well, that's what I'm saying, like, at night, our kitchen right now, we've been open the whole time, and our kitchen's open until ten o'clock.
They can still do takeout.
But you can do takeout, you can do...
I'm gonna be able to keep it open as I have it.
You'd, you'd still be able to do takeout.
I'm not over here.
You'd still be able to do takeout till ten o'clock.
It's just the outdoor seating.
And indoor seating till whatever.
Well, they can't do...
They're not supposed to be doing indoor seating right now, so...
So you can do takeout whatever your current permit is, but just for this extended premise, we're gonna, I'm pretty sure we're gonna keep the same for everybody to start off, which is gonna be, for you, seven AM until eight PM on Sunday through Thursday, and seven AM until ten PM on Friday and Saturday.
Takeout till whenever.
Takeout till whatever your...
And, yeah. And then, then, no chance of changing anything, even though we're not, we're proper?
We are Situets proper.
We play, we play off the bridge there a little bit later than that, so...
We all, we all, we consider everybody...
We're gonna lose all our business to them.
We're gonna try it out this way, and then, like I said, every meeting, we'll probably be discussing it more, and hear comments from people and adjust accordingly, but I think to start off, the sense I'm getting from the nods, is we're gonna start off the way I just mentioned.
Okay.
Uh, Sean?
I, I, I wasn't nodding at, at that time, Tony, um, they're different, it, it is, they are separate. What would, what would be the, and, you know, it's, it's in Hamarok, it's the...
Well, it's not the operations that they run right now, they're gonna be sitting outside.
Right.
They've got residents all around them also, um, you know, it's just for this extended period. Now, if they do actually go get seating, and there's a, if there's a public hearing, well, people can come in and discuss it, then that'll be different. But for this one temporary period, I think the sense is, I'm getting from everybody, that we wanna keep it the same for all.
In two weeks from now, if you get nothing but rave reviews and people are clamoring to have extended hours, then you can revisit all these and extend their hours.
Okay, all right.
I just wanna know when they're gonna start serving breakfast.
Well, hopefully tomorrow. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, uh, I'll go back to you guys if you have any other comments before I open it up to the public.
One more, one.
Okay, can we go into Q and A?
Yep. Q and A session has started.
If you have any questions for the Voyage, hit star sixty-one.
This cracks me up.
All right, seeing none, um, can I have a motion?
Q and A session is over.
Move to approve a temporary extension of the premises license to the Voyage as outlined in their application, except not to exceed, total capacity not to exceed the total, capacity not to exceed the total capacity of their license, um, as well as the hours amended from seven AM to eight PM, Sunday through Thursday, seven AM to ten PM, Friday through Saturday, subject to abiding to all of the regulations outlined in the governor's executive order.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four to zero with one abstention, Ms. Canfield has left the room. Thank you, guys, um, and we haven't really said this, but this goes in effect tomorrow, right?
Yep.
So this goes in effect tomorrow, so we'll see you for breakfast.
So let Jim know if you're open for breakfast.
Yeah, will you be open for breakfast tomorrow?
They are.
That's what I miss breakfast the most, out of everything, breakfast.
To get up for...
Thank you, guys, best of luck.
For takeout.
All right, now let's do the three on, um, the three on Front Street. So we will start with the easiest. We'll go to Salt Society. So right now, all they're asking for is four cafe-style tables on the sidewalk from eleven-thirty AM until nine PM.
Based upon that drawing and knowing the sidewalk down there, you can still get by that.
Okay.
Pick up the whole sidewalk.
Right.
We wanna keep the same hours, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so we'll do the same that we just did for whoever else. Is Kara on the line, or anyone from Salt?
I believe so.
So can I have a motion for Salt?
Move to approve, um, a temporary extension of the license for the Salt Society as outlined in their application, amending the hours of operation from eleven-thirty to eight PM, Sunday through Thursday, and eleven-thirty to ten PM, Friday and Saturday, subject to abiding to all of the regulations outlined in the governor's executive order.
Okay, I'll have a second by Mr. Harris, can we open it up to Q and A?
Q and A session has started.
Are there any questions for Salt Society? If there are, hit star sixty-one, please. Okay, seeing none, um, we'll close the question session.
Q and A session is over.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, none, it's five-zero unanimous. I expect they'll be coming back and probably considering Front Street as well, um, but we'll deal with that when it happens.
Yeah.
Um, next one we'll do is Riva. So Riva has a, um, a plan that puts, uh, tables up on the walkway by the movie theater and by, um, the retail establishments up there. It is, looks like eight tables in total, and they want it from four to ten daily. Any questions on Riva, other than adjusting the hours?
They're gonna need to provide us with a plan showing the seating, this does not show it.
Okay.
So you'd have to have a conditional, uh, approval pending showing us the drawing where the seats are gonna go.
So we don't know what the size of the tables are either.
Yeah, they don't say the number of people. I'm sure they can get that to us.
And, and then, like, uh, that they, I don't think that the, the owner of that space, I'd like to just confirm that they have permission from the owner of that building.
Yeah.
Okay. Lorraine, will you contact them?
We'd like to know the owner of space, what, number of tables, drawings, and number of seats.
And they actually didn't...
It does say we can get six tables there spaced six feet apart, but they don't really say the size of the tables.
And can you just tell them we need that for, uh, Salt also? They didn't, they didn't give us a drawing for Salt.
They did, it's...
They did, yeah, they did.
Small one, but it's, there is a drawing there.
Oh, right, okay, great.
Zeroed very well.
All right, can I have a motion?
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, do we wanna leave this one for Jim and Jim to approve pending all that information?
Yeah.
Why don't we make a motion approving and changing the hours and...
Contingent upon us getting...
Contingent upon, okay, okay. Move to approve, uh, temporary extension of the premises license for Riva as outlined in their, uh, as outlined in their application, um, amending the hours from four PM to eight PM, Sunday through Thursday, and four PM through ten PM, Friday and Saturday, uh, subject to abiding to all of the regulations outlined by the governor's executive order and pending the submission of detailed plans of the size of tables and authorization from the property owner to do so.
Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, did we do Q and A for them yet? I don't, yeah?
For Riva?
Yeah, we'll do Q and A for Riva.
Q and A session has started.
Does anyone have any questions for Riva? Hit star sixty-one. Is there anyone on the line? Anyone listening?
There are, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Q and A session is over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, it's unanimous, five to zero. And lastly, we'll do the galley, um, as we've talked about previously, this is the only one that is going to be in front of Front Street right now, um, and, uh, they've sent us plans where they're gonna rope off a area in front of their establishment. We are gonna close Front Street from, Maura, you know the, or someone know the names of the streets from Beal...
From Beal to Otis.
From Beal to Otis, and direct traffic to go on Cole Parkway around and up Otis to get through that area. Half the street will be utilized, half the street will be open for pedestrians to walk.
Uh, Mr. Chair, who is subject to provide all the barriers around the seated place? Because if...
He is.
He is, okay.
We will have to barricade the street, so we'll have to provide DPW to do that.
Okay.
With only this limited closing, I'm not sure what the police are gonna want for details. My intention is to submit those costs as COVID-related costs, uh, and see if we get them back reimbursed.
Okay.
So theirs is a little bit different, 'cause we're closing Front Street, we've let everybody else use whatever hours and days that they've wanted. They are looking for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
And when will this go into effect, Tony?
Um, tomorrow, but tomorrow's not Thursday.
Yeah, so this weekend.
Yeah.
Well, I think we have to be taking to consideration the days that we allow, 'cause whatever we allow here, and we have to assume that the other folks down the street are gonna come and want the same closure, right? Um, that's my first concern, and then, second, I really wanna, after we talk about the hours, I do wanna talk about the expansion of his, the extension of his space, um, because residents have called in, um, to, uh, place some concerns about accessing their front door to their residence, where these, the way in which this diagram shows blocks that off. So I don't think it should go beyond the borders of his building to this, to the south side at least, it'll have...
Well, how is it blocking it off? 'Cause the sidewalk is not being used.
If that's the case, then I think we need to make sure that people aren't lingering on the sidewalk there, they're not hanging out there smoking cigarettes right there.
The complaint is, is people smoke and block them.
Right, and hanging out, right, in that entryway.
Next to the galley to the left, where people go into their building, so...
Well, we can just tell them to monitor that, and if we get complaints, then we'll...
All right, again, people... Right, and again, people aren't gonna be coming out from the bar, having a cigarette, and going back in the bar, so shouldn't be the same problem, but we'll make sure that's brought to Brian's attention, and he's gonna make sure people are not loitering. The licensed establishments in all cases are supposed to make sure people are not loitering around waiting in the end of the establishment, so.
It's reservations.
He's gonna have to monitor that, monitor that.
And I would ask that they monitor it better than they did last year.
Karen?
Yes, Ms. Burr. I have just a couple of questions about the proposed layout. I, I'm not sure that I think it's, I, I know I don't think it's a good idea for the side, the street's gonna be closed in that section, I think the whole sidewalk should be closed up, you know, so that they bring their boundaries up to the building, because it's not very wide there, and they'd be having servers, and there's, and the whole point of extended premises is to control where the liquor is, and they could do it this way, but I would think if you brought their boundaries up against the building and closed the sidewalk off, you know, the boundary of their buildings, if you're following me?
Mm-hmm, it's a very good point. At least their front door.
And then you could shorten that section, they'd make up some space, shorten it so that it didn't extend in front of those people's entrance to their, their place, so it didn't extend out the building.
I agree with Karen, I don't think you can keep the sidewalk open, people are gonna be bumping into servers, you know.
No, the sidewalk won't, won't, well, I don't think you should serve tables on the sidewalk, but it should be, it should be closed to the entrance of the, to get into the restaurant.
I don't think you want to encourage people walking up and down the sidewalk, crossing paths.
So under what he's proposed, as I understand it, the sidewalk would be open, and the servers would be coming out, crossing the sidewalk, and going into the-
So I think it should be closed for the, for the perimeter of his building.
I do too, yeah, I mean, you see any outdoor cafe-
But not going out to the street.
Yeah.
So I, I don't mind that it goes out into the street this way, but it would be closed.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying.
So if you're gonna close the sidewalk, then you should allow them to put a table or two on the sidewalk.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I assumed that some of those tables that are almost on the street anyway, would be just pulled out, so that they're not inside. I'd like, I'd like-
Not what he's showing, please.
How many ta-
I think that-
You lose about nineteen seats on his plan if you brought it in to conform with the width of the building. I don't know how many of those you would be able to get back on the sidewalk.
I don't, I don't think we're saying bring the whole thing into that conformity, I think you're saying, close the, close the sidewalk off for the space of his building also.
But I also think it should go, the, the south line should be, should be-
Even with his property line?
Parallel, what's the right word?
Even with his property line?
Yeah, so that the people that have that corridor, there's no, they don't have to go out and around it.
Okay, I see what you're saying, so she says, you look at the building, on the left-hand side, the delineation of his space would come out from the building.
Right.
And then it would go down Front Street, past the building, Karen?
I think you can, and you just, you just-
Past where, so, yeah, we just-
I understand what she's saying, you don't have, I, I get it.
So on the right-hand side, as you look at it, remain the same, on the left-hand side, you'd bring it in, but basically allow them to take the two tables that you'd be cutting off, and put those on the sidewalk.
Yeah, you can more than make that up on the sidewalk, probably.
And I don't know-
But why?
I mean, can we ask, I mean-
The couple of comments that we got that Lorraine and I forwarded out, I forwarded to Lorraine, Lorraine forwarded to you, was about that, that, the noise, but also about people loitering in that area specifically.
But you, you can't.
I'm not, I'm just saying, Tony, that's what we got.
That's what they do, right.
On that point, I mean, is, would it, I didn't know if this was a really bad idea or a good idea. What, you'll tell me. For the duration of, if we were gonna do this, can we require that Brian put, you know, like a, sort of rope back there, and a residence only, like make him put a sign that says, "Residence only"?
I'm not sure they're gonna want to rope the residents, but-
No, there's gonna be some sort of rope coming off his building.
Yeah, if there's something coming off the building, Karen, people theoretically can't get in there.
No, it's not true.
No, 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 I'm talking about a visual reminder so people don't loiter, and make that his responsibility to put that there. Just, I mean, this is not a new problem, it's not related to this, just to, just to provide more, I don't know, I haven't think all, all the way through, you know what I'm saying?
Right, we'd want, we'd want the entrance to the, to this new configuration would be on the right-hand side, as you look at the building, so people would go in there, as opposed to, the way he has it is now, they get on the sidewalk and enter.
Yeah, no, they should have-
You wouldn't want it in front of that area where the residents are complaining.
The servers, servers stationed everywhere, or somewhere on that side.
Well, it could, right, or it could be in the front.
Yeah, as long as it's not on the left side.
Okay.
That's a very good point.
Yep, I like that point. But I don't know why we're constricting his tables to the left.
What do you mean, here?
Other side.
Here?
So people can leave those condos and walk straight out.
And walk straight out, and not-
And they'll make it up on the sidewalk, so it'll still have seats.
I also honestly, and I know I'm gonna be the only one here, I think it has, it should stay within the perimeter of his building, I don't think it should encroach down in front of Creo, I don't think it, I mean, they need people to be able to go in and out, there are other businesses there, we're already extending the space for him here, which is great, I, I just think we need to be cognizant that there are other businesses that still need to operate.
Do you think it should come just straight out from their perimeter of their building?
I don't, so why are we restricting it? We're, we're trying to give him an opportunity to-
What if, okay, but, but to Maury's point, what if Creo said, you know, we might want some deals up-
He doesn't even go in front of Creo.
He doesn't, or is he in front of-
Tony, I'm assuming he wouldn't go in front of Creo.
And their hours-
Alright, okay, he's in front of-
He's in front of the gym.
Their hours only overlap with the Get in Shape for Women for an hour.
Which is fine, yeah.
And they're not allowed to be open right now.
Right.
Right, okay.
So, I think they accommodated that in this-
And I would say, Creo, go open up and go to the, go further to the right, I mean-
Yeah, I mean, if Creo-
I'll give you that, I just would like the board to consider starting it at his south wall.
So you want to cut off all of this?
Just this.
Just the bag, and then extend it to the building.
This would extend him in front of Get in Shape for Women, but would not extend him from what I can tell, all the way down.
He can throw the six-foot table here, and he can throw these other four-foot tables here, and be done, he's not gonna lose any capacity.
And I wouldn't be opposed to closing the sidewalk in front of his whole restaurant.
Yeah, that's what-
It is.
That's what we're suggesting, yeah.
Is, is Brian on the line?
I don't believe so.
Anyone?
Brian's at the parrot right now.
Is anyone from the galley on the line?
Of course not. Yeah, I've got some cell phones, we could go into Q and A and see, if they are on the line, they can hit star six-one, and then we can-
Let's go to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
So we're opening the questioning for the galley. Hit star sixty-one if you have any questions for the galley.
I do have a caller. Have a caller?
You're on the line?
Hi, I'm, hi there, it's Kevin, manager over at Galley, how are you?
Oh, hey, Kevin.
Yay.
So, have you heard our discussions?
Yeah, yeah, I've been listening, I've been taking notes the whole time.
Okay, so are you, what's being proposed is that the south side of your building would go straight out, and you'd lose a little bit of tables to the left side there, but we would open up the whole sidewalk for you, and you'd be able to move them up in front of your door, or in front of your windows, to put tables there to make up for that capacity. Does that work for you?
Yeah, absolutely, um, yeah, I would definitely, I'd definitely be interested in using the sidewalk for share, so have to go straight out, and you said something about going a little bit in front of the, the fitness center as well?
You could, you, you can go, well, you can't use the sidewalk in front of theirs, but you can use the, the street, as far as your boundary goes to the north is fine, the one to the south will be trimmed back, and the, and the whole sidewalk will be closed in front of your, in front of your building.
Okay, yeah, I'm definitely okay with that, and then as far as how far it goes out, does it basically go to, what it goes to the yellow line in the street to allow for emergency vehicles down Front Street?
Exactly. The one other thing that was brought up, Kevin, is your entry point, we don't want your entry point to be on the, if you're looking at your building, the left side, because that's where the entrance is to some residents, so your entry point would have to either be on the right side or the middle, you'd have to figure out where you want your reservations to come in, but not be on the left side.
Okay. I think the right side would be, yeah, the right side would definitely be the center side, correct?
Correct. Sean?
Is it Kevin?
He's gonna be down there tomorrow, I can get on around eleven o'clock and just go over with him.
Okay.
Is it, is it Kevin who's on the line? Kevin, just wondering if, you know, this is available tomorrow, I'm just curious, hopefully the answer is-
Well, it's not Wednesdays, we're not, we haven't decided-
No, no, alright, I'm sorry, I tell you it's Tuesday, no, but this is gonna go into effect this weekend at some point, is your restaurant ready to open up?
Uh, we're making really good pushes right now, I did a couple pickups today, but it's super small stuff, like soda lines and everything, so all the construction that's being done is in the kitchen, all our kitchen equipment's back in, plumbed in, gas lines are all, up and running. I think Thursday, I mean, as long as we make a really good push, we'll, and we can, you know, make do with whatever we have to do for, you know, canned beverages for now. I think I'm only one day delayed on, on getting, like, sound and sodas and everything.
No, I just-
Yeah, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, we just, we saw, you know, an extensive renovation job that was going on there, so good luck.
Kevin, are you down there tomorrow?
Yes, I've, I've been down there quite a bit this week.
So if I-
I'm down first thing this morning, first thing tomorrow morning as well.
If I was down there around eleven o'clock, I could just kind of go over what the board's approving tonight with you, so you understand it?
Absolutely, yeah, I can meet you there for sure.
Aye.
Karen, Cantfield?
Well, we have him online, I don't think we addressed the dates.
Right, so we've got to deal, that was my next point, so. So we haven't decided what days we're gonna close Front Street, they're asking for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, initially, we were just talking two days, Friday and Saturday.
Right.
He's asking for four, we weren't really thinking four initially, but what does the board think in terms of what days we want to close Front Street? I guess all the other retail establishments are not open.
Typically, no.
Like, should it be five? Because that's when businesses typically close, or is that really irrelevant?
Well, it's, it's a double-edged sword, so the, the Saturday, I'll do it backwards, so Saturday and Sunday, the eleven to nine, you know, it's, that section, you know, would benefit those people, Thursday and Friday, you know, you got Harbor Houses there, and I think that's it, is CBS?
Both, they're across the street, but they can get-
But they can get like, backside, that's it.
Well, closing down Front Street's a big deal.
Yeah.
So we've got to figure out, do we want to close it for two days, three days, four days?
I think it should just be the weekend.
Start with two.
Start with two.
I don't think so, he wouldn't even open for two days.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Kevin, are you on the line? Do you have, do you have more business on Sunday evenings or Thursday evenings?
Well, he wants to, while there-
I think Sunday evenings would, um, tough to say, Sunday evenings, you know, before all this happened, Sunday evenings were pretty soft for us.
Okay.
Thursday evenings were pretty good, so, yeah, that's, I mean, that would be on my, I'd like to put on that.
So I don't have a, a huge problem about doing all four days, but I just want to, I, I guess people going to church and doing stuff on Sundays are probably more disruptive to close Front Street.
Will you bring back the blue lost? Yeah, it's a long time, I mean, he's, he's requesting-
If that's all we're closing though, at this point, if that's all that's being closed, it's a pretty easy around through Cole Parkway.
I think we have to look to the future and know that it's probably gonna expand.
That, that's a, a bigger go-around when you close the other four days.
And perhaps it's not the lunches, perhaps it's just the dinners, you know?
I was just saying that, it's like, if you're slow on Sunday nights, why would we keep it closed till nine o'clock on a Sunday? The rest of the retailers are definitely not open then.
Right, I'm wondering if it's not during the day, if people should be able to use, you know, go to, go to hardware store, go get your haircut, all that sort of stuff.
The Sunday brunch crowd is robust, yeah.
Right, well, I guess he could use, he could use the sidewalk.
Well, that I'll have outdoor seating right now is, you know, given the circumstance and everything that opens this week, I think people are just honestly eager to get out at any point, so, you know, given what our business was in the past, I don't think that might, that might not even apply at this point, I think, you know, if we're even, you know, for Sundays, for example, even if we're doing, you know, four o'clock, we don't even, we'd even need the whole day, I think people would come out regardless, as long as, you know, as long as we're open.
Well, what's the-
So-
Sorry.
As far as, as far as whether, you know, whether it's Thursday or whether it's Sunday, I think, you know, it's, I did either or right now, whatever would be best for the public as far as, you know, operating around our business, like somebody said, you know, church on Sunday, Sunday morning traffic, you know, I think, I think people make accommodations regardless of our hours, they'll, they'll come out for us, I think.
So I would recommend Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and just do the evenings, and if he wants to do something and can put four or five tables on the sidewalk, he can do the sidewalk on, oh no, probably can't, right, if, if the streets are open.
Right, force some people to walk up the street.
No, so let's, I would recommend Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, and keep it at the, the hours that we were saying for everybody, because I know that the other establishments are gonna want to do the same thing.
They'll join in.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
I don't know, I think Saturday and Sunday is a different animal, I think they lose a lot of business, people are out there on the, for lunch, and if we're gonna close it down, I think it would be nice to have a cafe experience for a longer amount of time, it just seems like a lot of work to do for four hours, I'm just talking out loud right now.
I mean, I think it's gonna be crowded no matter when he's open, I just think the pent-up demand for people to get out and go to a restaurant, so whether you do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or-
Yeah, my point exactly, yeah.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's gonna be crowded from when he opens to he closes, in my-
But I wouldn't want to close it Thursday during the day, I think Saturday and Sunday, I think this is a little unique.
Right, his request is Thursday and Friday night.
Right.
Saturday and Sunday, from eleven-thirty in the morning almost all the way through.
I would be inclined to just do the nighttime, four to, four to whatever, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Yep. Just cause-
I think there is benefit, especially if we presume that it's gonna be extended, other people, you know, we're gonna end, extend, I think there's benefit having a pedestrian mall for the short amount of time on, like, I wouldn't want to do it Saturday and Sunday, honestly, but to do it on Saturdays for the retailers, people come down, they make their reservation, they can't linger, but they can go over to, you know, the shops and spend an hour shopping before the reservation, I think that will help our retailers personally, and they are not, and they're not generally opposed to it, but I would, I think Saturday and Sunday, I think we try it on a Saturday, and if it's, everyone's like, "This is the best thing ever," we can always extend it.
You don't think more people are gonna be annoyed that they can't drive down Front Street?
The banks, I, I don't think it's gonna fly, Saturday during the day, I don't think is-
You don't think so, Sean?
No, the banks will have a fit, it's not-
And get to the bank.
Still, people avoid the harbor, they're, you know-
They can get to the banks, they can get to-
Well, they can get everywhere, it's just-
Well, and let's talk a little bit about what, if they're operating four PM to nine PM, when is the road closed? Is it three PM? You know, what, is it an hour? Is it 3:00 p.m.? You know, what, is it an hour? How long is it gonna take them to set up?
Fifteen, 20 minutes.
Well, Kev, what's his name?
Kevin.
Well, it's closing at four, so they do whatever they, they prep whatever they do, cause the road closes at four.
Well, that's my point, they're saying it's operating four to blah blah blah, whatever.
We close at four, then start serving at 4:30. The road closes, for this amount of closing, short, short period of time. We have these, we have the new reflective barriers that we'll put up, they take a couple sandbags, two guys there.
All right, I'm just trying to understand what this process looks like.
And I don't mind, I like the idea of closing Front Street for Saturday, I like the idea of it, I just don't know if it's gonna be more of a nuisance or more of a benefit.
All right, how many have you got, how many calls did you guys get in the last three weeks? Are you guys gonna close Front Street? I mean, I think it's, to his point, a pent-up demand. It's not like we're doing it forever. It's, you know, it's reintroducing the harbor to people to shop and eat.
I just thought it was in the evenings myself, that's what I was thinking.
Or maybe it's noon, maybe it starts so, you know, people can do all their errands and stuff in the morning, and you do it from noon until 9 on Saturday.
So is retail still just curbside pickup for the small places?
No, retail's all-
Yeah, it's a limited capacity, but you can go in, yeah.
And what did the chamber say? What was your conversations with the chamber?
Well, the, the, um, we, we didn't, I mean, Mark had some concerns that, he was the chair and the president of, that I think was all the concerns we had. Talking to all the residents, I mean, to the store owners, it was overwhelmingly supportive. Some were, you know, like, absolutely, and then the rest were like, yeah, that helps people, that's a good idea.
Well, maybe we do Saturday, Sunday, 1, 1 to 9:00 p.m., and that way it frees up, the churchgoers can get through, these guys get the late lunch on Sunday, whatever, you know, gives everybody a little bit more time. Is that something that would be considered? I think they need more than just the evenings on Saturday and Sunday to make this a nice desirable cafe kind of-
So we have to decide, so if we think we wanna do during the day, do we wanna do one or two days? And and just know that it's gonna be more disruption than just that area, cause I'm pretty sure that Salt and Reva and everybody's gonna wanna get on board in Hibernia meeting. Why don't we try one day and see where it goes?
Kevin, does that work for you guys?
Yeah, absolutely, if I was to pick one, I, I think, you know, uh, Sunday would be the best to open up early, like, 1 o'clock would be great.
So do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Eight, eight p.m.
For, what, 8:00 p.m. Is that what you're thinking, Kevin? Just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Yes, that would, that would be a great idea.
Okay.
I, I can give that a, so it would be Thursday from 4 to 8, Friday from 4 to 10, um, Saturday from 4 to 10, Sunday from 1 to 8.
So we're gonna close half of, half of Front Street for that amount of time, right now, for one-
Thursday, yeah.
All right, yep, for one establishment.
Well, I'm gonna-
Yeah, no, I know others will probably jump on, but right now, four days-
The only problem with that is good for his brunch business on Sunday, but I don't think it helps retailers. I mean, they may decide that they're gonna open on Sundays cause they, they could get the good traffic.
Well, I mean, they're open on Sundays anyway.
They're open on Sundays, Karen.
Probably open on Sunday.
I go shopping on Sundays all the time.
Oh, great, cause I don't shop on Sundays.
Where do you live? Yeah, it's your, it's your habit.
Sorry.
Nice, except for you need a beer than any other town in New Hampshire.
Um, the only thing that I would say is I think we need to be consistent, so I think, you know, Thursday and Friday hours should probably, although we did 8:00 p.m. everywhere else, right? All right, I just, then, okay.
Karen, any?
Well, so we try it, and if we get negative feedback or it's just not working, then we don't extend it, or we-
We amend it, yeah.
What do you say for Sunday, what hours, 1?
1 to 8.
1 to 8.
And we can close out that other section of Front Street from Harborview Spirits down to the gas station. And there would still be ways to get, get in and around, so it'd really only be two sections of Front Street.
The big difference between this and Heritage Days is you would be leaving Otis open, which we normally don't do.
And there won't be vans, and there won't be-
And there'll be emergency-
Beer gardens.
Correct, and the vendors won't be, there won't be vendors, there won't be vendors with the-
Outside, outside vendors.
No outside vendors.
This is gonna be a doozy of them.
All right, well, I mean, we're trying it, we're gonna get criticized for it, and we'll just see how it goes, and so I guess, Kevin, here's my question for you, because you're the only one that we're closing the street for right now. We've gotta know if you're gonna be ready for Thursday, cause we do not wanna close the street.
Um, I, yeah, I would definitely talk to Brian, I can give him a call Thursday, tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I'm pushing real hard, like I said, um, I would definitely, you know, wanna talk with, uh, talk with him, have him come through. Um, one of the holdups also is, since he's been down at Parrot's, opening up that outside, um, we're trying to get, we're basically trying to get food back down there, so it's gonna be a real time to probably get that stuff going, but knowing Brian for as long as I have, he's, uh, he can make it happen.
Okay, so I want, you'll talk to Jim tomorrow and get a sense for, um, for what the opening day would be, cause we, we definitely do not wanna close the street if you are not gonna be open.
Inspections.
Okay.
Inspections.
Oh, do you have to get inspections for the kitchen?
Um, not that I've heard, I'm not sure if Brian spoke to anybody, um-
All right, I'll tell you what, Kevin, talk to Brian and then talk to Jim tomorrow, and we'll figure it out.
Jim would have to get on and inspect that.
Okay, yeah, by the time, by the time Jim stops by, I'll definitely have already talked to him. Um, yeah, I'll reach out to him as soon as I can, even tonight maybe, if he don't float around.
Okay.
It's fine, if you're not gonna be ready till Friday, or you're not gonna be ready for a week, that's, that's fine. We just don't wanna pay people to come in and close the street if we're not gonna be operating anything.
Exactly, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so, so let's say hypothetically we would need like, an extra day. We can, you know, put this in place, technically start it on Friday, and then the following week it would be as usual, the Thursday through Sunday?
Yep.
Okay.
Karen?
So the police details, if there have to be, will be paid by whom?
Well, Nancy's giving me the hairy eyeball, I would submit those as a Corona expense and try to get the county to approve it. Otherwise, it would be paid by us.
By the town?
Yeah.
Now, the town doesn't pay to close down Front Street for Heritage Days?
Yeah, this is, this is so unique in trying to help the businesses. If I told the businesses, you're gonna pay that cost, they're not gonna open.
Right.
So, for the short term, again, Nancy's giving me the hairy eyeball. We'll absorb the expense, we're gonna try to slide it through, and then we'll see what's happening.
And I don't, and Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, I'm kind of rogue here. I don't think we can compare what we do for Heritage Days and years prior to this at all. I, I understand some of the concerns, but again, we're trying to keep our economy afloat right now, and these are just some drastic steps, I think, that we're trying to achieve.
And maybe you can identify, you know, there's gonna be minimal details, I would imagine.
DPW's minimal, the police will be why they're down there, so whatever we're closing the road for, there'll be a police detail on either end.
So then we have to have potentially four police details?
Yeah, three.
Well, wouldn't you have them on both ends of both sides?
One, two, three.
Don't we have the four in the middle?
Yeah.
So three, for three-
Do you need a police detail if the road is blocked?
Oh, hi, Brian.
I mean, Mark has asked for one, I can talk to him about that, he would like details, but we could talk to him whether we need him or not.
I think for safety, you won't.
Well, if the road is blocked, and you can't get through, cause there's Jersey barriers blocking the whole thing.
But what if the, if a fire engine has to come down, you want a police detail to be there to pull the barriers, so, don't you?
Hey, Brian, hold on for one second.
Don't you want?
Sorry, we had some serious technical difficulties trying to get on there.
No problem, bear with us for one second, Brian.
The barriers are, the barriers are pretty easy to move.
All right, well, let's, we'll have to go, Mark knows, Mark's the expert at this, so he'll, he'll-
I'm sure he's watching.
Yeah.
Chief Thompson, I'm sure he's watching.
Okay, so, uh, Brian, I'll give you a quick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, yes, I can.
Okay, I'll give you a quick overview of what we're thinking. We've made the same hours for every step-
I've been listening to you for like, the last 20 minutes, I just couldn't, I couldn't plot on, but, um-
Then I won't talk. What do you, are you good with what we're, we're talking about? Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, and Sunday from 1 to 8?
Yeah, I think, you know, um, yeah, I think that's great, you know what I mean, I appreciate what you guys are doing, we're, we're, um, it can't have been, anything's better than nothing at this point, so, yeah, I think it's, I think it's awesome.
Okay, and do you think you'll be ready for this Thursday?
This Thursday, I know Kevin was talking to you guys already, we're waiting on, um, we're waiting on farmers, we should be pretty close.
I, I don't need an answer right now.
Maybe we can shut the doors down slightly, um, but, uh, what do you think, Kevin?
All right, you guys work it out and talk to Jim tomorrow, we just don't wanna close the street if you're not open.
Absolutely, I agree, I agree 100%, I agree 100%. Um, we'll, 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 we'll make that call tomorrow, and, um, could we, could we open up later in the week this week?
Yeah, it'd be Friday.
Yeah? Would that be a possibility?
Yep, so it'll be, it'll be starting Thursday, moving forward, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but-
Right.
We just don't wanna close the street if you're not ready, cause you're the only establishment on Front Street right now.
I am the only one using it, yeah, 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 I get you, um-
Just need to let me know tomorrow, Brian, when I meet with Kevin.
All right, Jim, that sounds, that sounds awesome. I'll go later in the morning with Kevin, we'll, we'll, sure, and I'll make the call from there.
And I'll be down there about 11 o'clock.
All right, thank you, I'll see you there at 11.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, well, let's see how it works, and we'll meet again in two weeks and adjust it if we have to.
Q and A session is over.
You're gonna come back and help us with this, right?
John's gonna be sitting home Saturday night going, I can't believe the board did that.
I know.
I would never do that.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
All right. Move to approve the galley for a temporary extension of their premises license as outlined in their application with modifications with the table layout not to extend beyond the south side of the galley premises, and adjustment in hours of operation from Thursday, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., subject to abiding to all of the regulations outlined in the governor's executive order.
Second, my Ms. Conley.
That right?
Did we, can we open it up to Q and A? I don't know if anyone's on there.
We did open it up, that's how we got Kevin, cause he wasn't in as a host, but we can do it again.
Anybody else?
Yeah. We can do it again.
Q and A session has started.
Are there any questions for the galley motion that we just made? Please hit star 61. Okay, hearing none, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Q and A session is over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, it is 5 to 0. Okay, well, thank you for going through the process, um, we'll see where it lands and adjust accordingly. And hopefully, like Karen Canfield brought up, hopefully the retail establishments can take advantage of this too, so, you know, they can extend their hours and be open, you know, similar like first, first Fridays,
Yeah.
you know, and get, um, hopefully catch people walking down the street.
Just, I'm sorry to interrupt, let's say this does happen, Saturday night or something like that, between now and then Creo decides to jump on the bandwagon, do they have to wait to come before the board in two weeks?
Well, there'd be two more motions the board would have to act on. One would be to give me the authority to close the other portion of Front Street, cause I'm not gonna do that without a vote of the board, sorry. Uh, and then the second would be for me to applaud, to approve additional requests for outside seating as they come before the board.
With the parameters that we've given.
Any else, Lorraine, she's giving me the hairy eyeball now, is that covered?
No, there's just one more vote to give Jim the authority to approve these.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator Jim Boudreaux to temporarily approve temporary licenses to restaurants to serve liquor under a temporary extension of premises and outdoor seating license in accordance with the COVID-19 Order Number 35, and consistent with the process of approving such requests for a temporary license established by the Board of Selectmen.
Second, further discussion?
Um, something else.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Can I also have a motion to, um, excuse me, if requests come through to close the other side of Front Street, that we give Jim the authority to close the other side of Front Street?
Otis Place and Heights Road.
Otis Place to Heights Road.
Harbor Heights Road, sorry, Harbor Heights Road.
Harbor Heights Road.
Move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator to, um, close Otis, uh, Front Street from Otis to Harbor Heights Road, um, pending review of additional submission, uh, close, uh, extensions.
And it'd be on the same conditions as the other-
Under the same conditions as outlined prior.
Second. Second, my Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, okay.
Mr. Chair, one more question on Front Street.
Yes.
There has been some people saying, you know, in the spirit of a sort of a, a first Friday kind of event, if somebody wanted to come and, you know, have a musician or something on the street, you know, for a certain amount of time, would we have, I would assume we'd have to do an outdoor entertainment permit of some sort?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Great, and Jim, anyone that, if you can just, anyone that requests a, um, additional license, if you can send it us before it gets approved?
Did you want Jim to have the authority to approve outdoor entertainment permits during this time as well? Or do you want those to wait till a select meeting?
I mean, based on the, the board's comments tonight, I'm not sure I'd be approving any outdoor entertainment anyways, um-
Well, it actually was an idea of doing like, a busker, like a sterling musician on a Saturday afternoon, but I-
Yeah, let's keep that-
I think it needs to come.
We'll keep it that with the board.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we don't want vans up there.
Okay, all right, so let's, uh, move right along to our 825 item. So this is the cancellation of summer 2020 special events. Jim, do you wanna, this is basically for the governor's guidelines?
Yeah, I mean, the two big ones would be, um, Heritage Days and the Knights of Columbus Carnival. Those are the ones that I had for discussion for tonight, I know Linda Ferguson brought up some other ones, but those are the two that I had for tonight, was Heritage Days and Knights of Columbus. I think Karen, the other one actually, was it you that brought those before us, those requests?
No, well, no, so here's the question, there's a bunch of, it, it gets complicated for things like, we've got the Maritime Center reservations throughout the summer, but the way it is right now is, you know, if you want 50 people inside that building, you're not gonna be able to do it. So we need to be able to, you know, be able to inform people that, if we, if we decide that we're gonna do, that, you know, we're, just so you know, between now and X date, that building will not be open for functions.
Right now, we're telling them to the end of June, it's not gonna be open. And then we'll get the new guidelines, and see what the new guidelines, if we go into phase three, and it says you can have gatherings up to 50 people, then now I can have people in the Maritime Center, if it says you still have to be at 20, it gets, it gets dicey, but Heritage Days and the Carnival, the biggest things we have, there's nothing else right now that I know of that's allowed on the entire South Shore, so if you have those events, everybody's coming here.
Yeah.
So you can still do, I mean, there are events that are outdoor events, there's no limitation on the 10 person for outdoor events if you can social distance. So, you know, the car, classic car thing, that doesn't matter, I mean, I would think that could continue, because it would lead to, anything that meets those guidelines would be fine, but we know that those two are unlikely under any scenario to-
So are we canceling all?
Well, that's, the, the discussion is, what makes, what parameters do you makes, makes sense, you know, this-
Well, I think we just have to follow the governor's guidelines and the state mandate, and if people, um, do we want people to come back to us and prove that they, that they can follow them?
I mean, I think the Knights are fine with canceling the Carnival.
Well, we can cancel those too.
And Heritage Days, I think the other ones are gonna be case-by-case basis's. It's just gonna have to be on a case-by-case, everything unfortunately right now is, I don't know, I don't know what the guidelines are gonna be when you get to that date.
So what are we trying to accomplish with this motion?
Well, I think that it's by canceling the two large ones, I mean, those are, there's so much preparation ahead of time on that, they can't, you know, they can't wait until the last minute to put together- the last minute to put it together and then they may, if they put all that effort in and then it turns out...
And I think they also have the ability to recoup expenses if we cancel it, opposed to them.
Okay, so why don't, so all we want to do is cancel those two events right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Could I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen, um, pro, um, can, uh, can you prohibit, oh, the move that the Board of Selectmen will not authorize permits in 2020 for the Knights of Columbus Carnival or Heritage Days 2020.
Per the Governor's guidelines.
Per the Governor's guidelines and safety, um, safety guidelines.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran, um, can we open her up to Q and A, is anybody?
Q and A session has started.
Um, is anybody on the phone to discuss the closing of the 2020 summer special events? Hit star 61.
Nope.
Okay, there's no one there.
Q and A session is over.
Did I get a motion and a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Uh, I think it was me.
Yeah, it was you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
That's sad, just for the record.
But Jack Johnson's not coming to Marshfield, so...
Right, but I hope, you know, I hope that people can get creative and like you said, the, the antique car shows and the stuff like that that can be done, that we try and keep that stuff going, I mean, that's frankly, that's what we're trying to do on Front Street.
All I can say is at least we're not Plymouth, oh, God, all that planning canceled.
The next topic is extension of the agriculture application interviews and public hearing. So basically, um, we've gone through the process, we have the applicants, the committee has reviewed them and ranked them, and the next step is for us to interview the applicants and then decide how we're going to proceed, but we haven't been able to interview them because we can't have a public meeting to do it. So at this point, what we're trying to do is just extend that, because there's guidelines and when we're supposed to finish these applications by. That being said, um, that's what this is dealing with.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
And where do we want to extend them until, until we can have folks come in, or what?
Yeah, I mean, I would extend it until such time as the Governor's emergency order is rescinded, or the Board of Selectmen can have a, a public hearing that is open to members of the public, something along those lines. She's going to keep the executive order in place as long as he needs to control something, but at some point, they might change the order on meetings and gatherings even though it's still in place, so we could have a meeting, so it's going to be one of those two things.
Anyone want to give that a stab? Okay.
Move to extend, I mean, yeah, sorry, move to, um, extend the agriculture applicant interviews and public hearing until such a time when either the Governor, Governor's executive order is in place, or when the Board, Board of Selectmen deems that a public hearing can be held with the safety guidelines according to the state can be met.
Well done, Laura.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion, can we open that up to questions?
Q and A session has started.
Does anyone have a question regarding the, um, extension of the agriculture application process? Please hit star 61.
Mr. Chair, somebody texted me and said that the system keeps saying star six six, star six, star six, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but...
Usually you hit star six and then the instructions will prompt them to then hit one.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so hit star six and
See what happens.
See what it asks you to do.
Whatever it tells you to do after that.
All right, I do have one caller.
Okay.
There you go.
Caller, if you can just give your name and address?
Um, Mary Hopkins, from the Town Council, and my question is, if you extend the deadline, are you going to allow more applicants, or is the deadline for applying finished?
Yeah, no, there's, there's no more applicants, um, being accepted, the process has just been delayed because of the COVID-19, so we have all the applicants in, they've all been, um, vetted and, uh, ranked by the board, by the advisory committee, and they're going to be interviewed in public. Thank you. Are there any other questions regarding the agriculture? Hit star six. Okay, we'll close question and answer.
Q and A session is over.
Um, I think I, I already have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous?
Who was the second?
Uh, Karen Cantfield.
Was I?
Marv.
No, Karen Conley.
K2.
I was still mulling.
Okay. Um, the next topic is the Lions Head Trust request, so this is a, a piece of property that we have the first option to, we have an option to purchase, um, because it was in, what, what was it, in a lien situation?
61A, which is agriculture.
Okay.
So in a 61A situation, an homeowner pays a reduced tax,
Right.
but at such a point, if they wish to take it out of that designation, we get right of first refusal to purchase it, and I don't believe this is the whole track, I think it's just a portion of that track.
Right, and it says that, what could we purchase the land for, because I know they have a, a potential buyer at $100,000, is that correct?
We would have to have it assessed, but they have to have a bona fide offer, we have to make a determination whether that offer is correct or not, um, generally, we can only pay a set.
Um, this is Kathleen O'Donnell.
One second, Kathleen, one second.
Representing the property owner's Lions Head Trust.
Okay, I'll open it up to you in one second. Go ahead, Jim.
Okay, just wanted to know I was here.
Thank you.
If it's a bona fide offer, we can buy it for whatever the purchase price is.
So do they have to pay all the back taxes?
Is it a bona fide offer?
If they're planning on taking it out of 61A, depending upon how long it's been in 61A, there may be some, some residual taxes on there.
Okay.
There's a couple idiosyncrasies on that as to how long it's been in and blah, blah, blah.
Okay, so per the documentation, it looks like there's an offer for $100,000, does that mean we would have to pay $100,000 for that piece of land? And it's a, a triangle, where, where is it exactly?
Border Street.
Over on the Gulf River, isn't it?
On the Gulf, yeah. But would we restrict it?
You know where the fields are when you head into Hocke House?
Yeah.
It's in there on the left.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Would we be restricted, if we purchased it, would it have to remain agricultural, or with the use?
Depends what you purchased it for.
Well, there are restrictions on the purchase, it has to stay for recreation, it has to go into a trust, it has to go...
Right, they've restricted their, the purchase, what they bought it for, if we bought it, we could buy it for any legitimate municipal use, unless we use CPC money, then we'd have to use it for one of those purposes.
Really? That's not what I read.
That's in their purchase and sale, if the town purchased it, the town would not necessarily be bound by the restrictions that are in the current sale.
Okay. All right, um, why don't we open it up to the attorney and, um, if you can just state your name again, because I missed it the first time, and then...
Absolutely, certainly, my name is Kathleen O'Donnell, and I'm the attorney for Lions Head Trust, and we are selling a small section of our 61A property to the neighbor to address an encroachment situation, um, so it is a small triangle or piece bordered by the Gulf River, it doesn't have any frontage, um, doesn't, uh, have any access, and it is required to be combined with the lot next door, um, which is number, uh, trying to see the property number, on Border Street. So all we're doing is taking out this slimmer, and we will be paying, um, a rollback tax, it's been in 61A, I think it's been for 50, so there's no cons价 tax, it's just a rollback tax, so it's a very small parcel compared to the, um, almost 30 acres they have in agriculture.
Okay, and the purchase price is $100,000?
It is $100,000, we have assigned purchase and sale agreement, I'm holding the deposit, and we're ready to close as soon as the town, we agree that it didn't want exercise with rider first refusal, so we, I, I dropped, I dropped everything off at the town hall in January, and then of course, you know, within the 120 days, we had a whole lot of other things happening in our lives, and so, uh, it's finally made its way into this agenda, I appreciate your, um, patience in putting up with it.
No problem, so Kathleen, it seems like we have a couple, we have two options and a couple ways to handle them, we can either not, or reject our option to purchase it, a couple, or we can put an offer in to purchase it, is that correct?
Well, you can, um, you buy for $100,000, um, it says it's a small triangle, doesn't have any access, um, the other option is to, if you, if, unfortunately, I would normally have been able to say, oh, it's more than 120 days, and I can file an affidavit as the original deed saying, I gave the town notice and they didn't do anything, and so that would make, that would take care of it, but the emergency legislation that the Governor has, which I know about, can I'm on the playing board in my town, um, has extended all those deadlines, including the 120 days for the rider first refusal to be exercised.
Right.
So, um, I could prepare a waiver of the rider first refusal and send that to the town, or the town council may have its own form for that, um, uh, but, um, you know, we've, we've been sort of sitting here trying to get this encroachment issue taken care of, with this guy, you know, selling wall on our property by giving him, by selling him the piece, and so, um, been waiting since, um, you know, December, November.
Okay.
So that, there's actually three things you can do, waive your right by taking your vote,
Do nothing.
exercise your right and try to purchase it, or the board just does nothing, and when the tolling put in place by the COVID-19 expires, and the town's rider first refusal expires, as council said, she files an affidavit that said the town did not respond, therefore the town has in effect given up its right to exercise its purchase authority, so those are your three, but that would leave...
Yeah, but that could be months from now.
You let me finish, council. That would leave the people in this situation hanging until, I, I think it's the same, uh, the same restrictions as on planning board, public hearing, so that's 45 days after the public emergency is declared to be no longer in effect, and so, again, that could be November, December, January, we have no idea when the Governor's going to remove that.
Right.
I mean, the question is, do we have any need for it, right?
Right, and how, do you know what the dollar amount of back, of rollback taxes that the town's receiving?
No, because it's, since we haven't made the request yet to the treasurer, I mean, we, I provided a copy of, as, as a notice as we were required to do to the supervisor, to the planning board, to the conservation commission.
I'm, I'm just asking a question, I'm not, yeah, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just...
It wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be much.
No, no, I was just, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I was just trying to be clear so that you could hear me, I, I didn't...
Given the, given the nature of that piece of property, it's not going to be...
I don't know what the rollback taxes are, I don't think that, you know, I don't think they're a whole lot, because it's, it's, you know, it's not that big a piece, we've got a much bigger, you know, parcel of land that's still under 61A, this isn't that many square feet.
Right.
Only, it's less than an acre.
Uh, Lorraine?
I did ask the planning board to please respond to this for your meeting, however, their meeting isn't until Thursday night, so one possibility is to wait for their input and move this to the June 23.
Okay. Or we can make a decision contingent on that, I mean, I'm not, I guess it, it's an awful lot of money for a sliver of land, I guess that's, um, just standing out a little bit.
Well, we're trying to offload property that we haven't done anything with for years.
But I don't think we have any use for it, so, um, and I don't want to hold up these people from executing whatever they want to, so...
So, so still, understand, so all of this property, do we have a right of first refusal on if that farm ever decides to sell?
If they want to change the use.
If they're changing the use.
They want to change the use, so that's really interesting.
So do you own the property, I'm looking at a little map here, is the, who's buying it, the, the property that has the house on it, or the property that's?
Yeah, um, the property just to the north.
151.
So the one that I'm looking at doesn't, has a house, so is the house the people who have the, the current owners? I guess that would...
Well, yeah, we're selling it to the, you know, the people of, it's, um, Smith, at 151 Border Street, so...
Lots, lot A?
If you're looking at the plan, there's this little, you know, there's all these lots that come in off of Border Street, and so you see, you know, the Smith's house, and then their garage and the driveway, and they have a pool, and I guess the problem is that their pool is too close to the lot line, so we're selling them this piece so that their pool and their house are maybe, you know, not, I know it's sort of in compliance with them.
In compliance.
Right, it'd be non-conforming.
The houses there, including Mrs. Blakey's house, um, on, which is on the Gulf River, it's all, her house is for sale, you have like Stone Apple and Buck, um, uh, Cameron was on market for it, but, you know, so at some point in the game, she died last year, you know, the trust will probably be doing something with this, but this little tiny piece, we're just trying to sell to the neighbor.
Okay.
The neighbors, if the neighbor has a structure that's too close to the lot line, it's non-conforming.
Yeah.
Great.
So selling this to the neighbor would eliminate the non-conformity from that piece of property.
Probably, does anyone have, anyone opposed to just having this woman write a waiver and we can, um, sign it and move on? Karen?
No, but we're not giving anything away of any value, correct, at this point?
Just the right to buy it.
Because we can't get in there.
Right.
It, it's not usable.
We'd have to cost, pay $100,000 to get it?
For something, and the only reason why they're here is because there was a conservation restriction in agricultural, and so...
Agricultural, yeah.
So we're just sort of releasing them from that, or...
You're, you're giving up your option to buy it, which would allow them then to take it out of agricultural use
Okay.
with payment of the rollback taxes, so that's the difference between what it would have been taxed at, at full and fair market value, and what it was taxed at under the agricultural restriction.
Sean?
Kathleen, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is not the first time the town has bought some of this property, correct?
Um, I think the town bought maybe property across the street.
From the same family, so this has been done before?
Yeah.
Well, since I've been on this board.
Institutional knowledge.
I'm going to abstain.
Well, it was funny to hear you, uh, to hear Sean being honored, because actually, I worked for Coleman and Page, and I helped, um, you buy the boat yard when you first adopted the Conservation Preservation Act, it was a great, great project.
Name sounded familiar.
Right.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion?
You received a document from our town council, uh, sent to you by email. Yes. Basically...
They gave us the options.
What your decision is.
So we want to waive our, we want...
Yeah.
I want to decline to exercise the law.
Motion to decline to, oh, exercise your right.
An option to purchase.
On 61A.
So do we want her to prepare the waiver?
She can prepare the waiver for us to sign, yeah.
Okay.
We'll just have Cindy look at it.
Okay.
Um, move that the Board of Selectmen, uh, mine's not loaded, move that the Board of Selectmen release...
Decline its option.
Declines its option for the right of first, um, off, right of first refusal on the purchase of property as described in the submitting documents, and that's it.
For the Lions Head Trust.
For the Lions Head Trust. Do you want to put anything pending, planning board?
Yeah, that's a good point, pending, um, pending approval from the, uh, planning board.
Is that necessary?
They may know something we don't know. I can't imagine, but...
Second.
Second, uh, further discussion, open it up to Q and A, is anyone on there?
Q and A session has started.
Q and A session has started.
Are there any questions for the Lions Head Trust request? There's none, we'll close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
All abstain.
One abstention, that's four zero with Mr. Harris abstaining. Thank you very much, Kathleen.
Thank you very much, I very much appreciate it. And I appreciate all your hard work tonight. It was very, you know, it was a long night for you folks, and a lot of things to consider, and I appreciate your hard work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Join us any night.
So our nine o'clock topic is the ambulance abatement. Nancy, I know we've done this many years.
I'll make it quick, it's the annual request for you to review the ambulance outstanding, decide if you want to write off any of the receivable. Your policy states that you will write them off after 24 months. What we've been doing is after 60 months, so following what we've done in the past, that would be one bill from 2014, and then, which is with 2015, which amounts to $99,739.07 if you chose to continue that process.
And we have tried to collect these for five years?
Yes.
Okay, and we've done this for at least the last two or three years.
Yes, we dropped the policy so that we could deal with the receivable.
Any questions from the board? It's a lot of money, but these people aren't paying it, so. All right, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the recommended abatements for all outstanding ambulance charges from fiscal year 2014 in fiscal year 2015 totaling $99,739.07.
Second by, I don't know who said that.
Ms. Conley?
Ms. Conley, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The next topic is the discussion and vote of the permit rules from recreation, and that has been postponed until the 23rd. We have some new business, which is board and committee annual appointments. Can I have a motion for them?
Move to appoint the following individuals for a term of one year or until a successor is named. Want me to name them?
Yeah, if you could just go through them all.
Agent of Veterans Benefits, Donald Knapp. The archivist, Jody McDonough. Assistant Town Accountant, Mary Sin Sinto. Citizen rep to the Scholarship Committee, Judith Byrne-Ariel. Custodian of Title Tax Property, Pam Avatabel Lee, sorry, Pam. Custodian of Veterans Graves, Donald Knapp. Fair Housing Officer, Jim Bedrow. Fence viewer, Paul Murphy. Field driver, Neil Duggan. Licensing agent, Sergeant Gerald O'Brien. Local auction permit agent, Pam Avatabel. Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority, Al Bangert. Metropolitan Area Planning Council, Jim Bedrow. South Shore Recycling Cooperative, Sean McCarthy. State Ethics Commission, Jim Bedrow. Sustainable South Shore, Lisa Scanlon. Tree Warden, Michael Breen. Veterans Agent, Donald Knapp.
Any questions on any of those? If not, can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Conley, further discussion, anyone on the line, Michelle?
We have one person on the line listening, I can open up to Q and A if they have any questions, yeah.
Q and A session has started.
You have any questions on these appointments, please hit star six. Close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero. We have a Hocker Peddler's renewal for Beacon Truck. They were, last year they had one as well? What do they do?
Coffee.
Have a chain of trucks.
Not a coffee drinker. All right, can I have a motion?
Move that board of selectmen approve a Hocker Peddler license to the Beacon Truck for the 2020 season pending board health inspection.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion, open it up to Q and A.
Q and A session has started.
Are there any questions on the Hocker Peddler license for Beacon Truck? Hit star six. Okay, we'll close Q and A.
Q and A session is over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero. Last topic of new business is a one-day wine and malt emergency license.
We do these annually, mostly for funerals and things like that, and they're out.
Oh, so this is just a giving you...
It's in preparation for that.
Can I have a motion?
Question? Why is Lucky Finn included in town property?
How much should I read every...
It's in, it's in the background information, saying that these locations, it says that this is a blanket for town of situat locations that include St. Mary's, JR Hall, Lucky Finn's Maritime. So is that...
A lot of people have a lot of events at Lucky Finn. They're rented out, have, you know, masses there and things like that. Just like St. Mary's isn't town property.
No, it's true, that's true. I guess I was just thinking it's more of a...
It's for, like, funeral type things and, yes.
Anything that comes up before our next meeting.
The next meeting? Okay.
And we report them all at every meeting under the emergency one-day mall licenses attached to your agendas.
Oh, okay.
As requested by Karen Pia Bill, which she first got appointed to the board.
Not Karen, is it?
You're a boy. One thing for us to do. You're welcome.
Okay, move to approve ten blanket emergency one-day beer and wine licenses for events at the town of situat, at various town of situat locations.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, other business, any liaison reports?
I just want to, I'm not going to go through a report, but Jim, I just want to set some time aside with you and Nancy to talk about some issues with the Beautification Commission, just with some challenges with COVID-19 and planning with Ship Shape Day, and also some watering and maintenance issues, so that's all. I just want to put that on the record that I need to set aside some time to talk about that.
Karen?
Just two quick things to remind the board that all of the boards and committees have been invited to participate with the Situate Loves Local campaign in various ways. So if you have questions, if they have any questions, Situate, you can go situateloveslocal@gmail.com. But, you know, basically, if a committee has a great idea for something that might help our community, that the Situate Love Local is in place to help make that happen. So, want to let me know. And I also just wanted to point out, the Situate Education Foundation has just announced their grants today. And I just wanted to just highlight that there are three that are very interesting, given where we started this conversation this morning, this morning, oh, this morning. The elementary schools have received a grant to do a program on Voices Not Heard, Teaching History from Diverse Perspectives. And the Situate Town Library is conducting a We the People Anti-Racism Workshop. And those things are in the works already, and they've been provided, funded by the Situate Education Foundation. And the Shellfish Advisory got the grant with Long, the gates and the high school to do a Bassing Beach Baseline Habitat Survey and Community Education Project. I thought those were very interesting.
Sean, anything?
Just a couple of quick things, Jim, just wondered, after the waterways meeting, you were going to, Steve Mo was going to contact you.
Yep, talked to Steve.
So, we're good, porta potties or restrooms are all...
I told him what his options were, and he needed to pick which one he wanted.
Okay, good, all right. And lastly, Lorraine, can you, resident head contacted me about either putting a crosswalk at the end of, not Bay Ridge Road, but right by Museum Beach, by the Yacht Club, a crosswalk and/or a speed limit sign. Can you see to it that someone, I tried to get Taylor Billings, left him a message, but I don't know if he got it.
I did forward that request to the SPD.
Okay.
For traffic laws and regulations.
Okay, would you just make sure that...
I'll follow up with them.
All right, okay. The woman's name was Jennifer Palmer, you know, all right, okay.
Great, and the only thing I'll add, and Nancy informed me just a minute ago, we had a financial forecasting meeting this evening, and we decided to go with the budget that had the 10% lower state aid numbers than last year's numbers, which we had discussed earlier. So those are the figures that we're moving forward with into this year's budget. Okay, can I have approval of the minutes?
We move to the town administrator report.
We do what?
Town administrator report.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, that's, I've been dying to do the town administrator report all night.
We'll go back to the beginning.
You're welcome.
It would have been crushed if we didn't get to it. So let me be very brief. No cases yesterday, no cases today since my report yesterday morning. So since last Thursday, Situate has only had the two cases on Saturday. One at each nursing home, otherwise we've had zeros all those days. That's a very good sign for us, we're 14 days out from Memorial Day weekend, which was a big weekend for people getting out, getting to the beaches. We would expect to see some numbers starting now. Fingers crossed, that, that's a very good trend for us. We talked a lot about the phase two, the restaurants, we did that. Retail is open, hotels, motels are open. Limited youth activities are available, practices can happen. Small groups, again, if you have 30 kids on a baseball team, you're going to break them into groups of 10. No scrimmaging, the coaches can't go from group to group. We've posted a lot of that on the website, so people should take a look at that. We've ordered signs for the playgrounds, when the signs come in, the playgrounds will be opened back up. But they are the warning signs that we need to put up for those playgrounds, and then we'll open those up based upon the guidelines that we've gotten for playgrounds. The library's back doing pickups, you can now order through the library catalog for the Situate Library only, because the old college network is not up and running again, you have to transfer books. But you can reserve books online or by calling the library and pick them up on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. You can drop them off any other time. Jesse is working on a plan to reopen the library, what that's going to look like. What we're really waiting for is for the state to give us some guidelines. We are concerned that if any one library opens in the area, and no other libraries do, that'll cause a real crowding situation for that particular library. So we want to make sure we're in line with all the other communities and how we're going to do that. Starting tomorrow, we'll be bringing staff back into the town hall. We'll be ramping back up to full staff in the building. Getting people back to work, starting to work on the backlog of things we have. The plan would be, starting next week, the building would be available to people by appointment. So you can make an appointment and come in. The reason for that is, the health agent and I believe that under the current guidelines, we would be considered office space, and therefore, we are supposed to be able to contact, trace anybody who comes into the building. So that's why we'll do it by appointment, and then reacting to the guidelines, we'll open fully to the public at some point following that. The library will be on its own schedule, the council and agent will be on its own schedule, although they will be back to work. I would anticipate the council and agent will probably be the last building in town that will be open again to the public. But again, town hall staff coming back, we'll start by appointment, and then we'll go to open the building to the public. Meetings will still be under the current guidelines until such time as the restrictions on gatherings are lifted. Just to decide that limit on 10 people or more does not apply to town meeting. As the legislative body of the town, it is exempt from the guidance relative to public meetings. Tony, with all the financial forecasts, the town elections is Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. Town meeting, 9:02, sorry, sorry. Town meeting is going to be right now Saturday, the 27th, at 9:00 o'clock on the football field. We'll have seats for in the neighborhood of 400, 370, 400 people, between the stands and some seats on the football field. Again, I will send out, if I remember, tomorrow what I'm proposing to the board for the consent agenda and for the postponed agenda. And then Nancy and I will be sending out shortly for you the budget based upon the 10% reduction in state aid. We will most likely have to have a meeting in between now and then for the board to consider that, so we can present at the town meeting. Two more things, then I'll start. The water department, again, please conserve water, we're using a lot of water with people being home. We need to conserve water, so reminders on that are on the website, and also the Water Resource Committee will be sending out a reminder to people about what the restrictions are on using water. And last two, the green sand filter, we've given the contractor notice to proceed. There was a meeting out at the site, and then a Zoom meeting with the residents. So we should be seeing some construction activity out there shortly. Karen, don't listen to this part. The notice to proceed has been given to the contractor for the berm. He has submitted rock samples for us to review, and once we approve that, he'll be able to get started bringing that material in.
They're the wrong color.
Yeah, they actually have to be a certain type of rock, which I find fascinating, but and then that process will start. That's all I'm going to do for today.
Do we have an estimate of a start time?
It's not date, not yet. When I get it, I'll let you know.
So you can?
I'll let you know. If his rocks are, sorry, if his rocks are the right type of rock, then he will get it sooner. If not, he's going to have to submit a different type of rock.
Stop touch.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Now can I have an approval of the minutes?
Move to accept the meeting as board of selectmen meeting held on May 26, 2020.
Second by Ms. Cantfield, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. We already said a farewell to Sean earlier, but it's been a pleasure, Sean. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And...
Would you like to do us the honor and have the last motion?
Absolutely.
Yes, could you give us a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
So moved.
Oh, come on now, let's go.
All right, give me a second, I get it. Give me a minute. I wasn't good enough tomorrow.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five to zero, unanimous, good night, everybody.
Good night, Sean.
Good night.